Start the recording.
Good evening. This is a special meeting of the Princeton zoning adjustment being held electronically via Zoom on November seventeenth, twenty twenty-two at seven thirty P M. Pursuant to section thirteen of the Open Publics Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton boarding zoning board of adjustment. Such notices been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy clerk of Princeton on November fourth, twenty twenty-two, and has been posted to the municipal website, W W W Princeton N J dot gov slash meetings. Pursuant to the extension of the ongoing state of emergency by executive order two ninety-two in accordance with the emergency remote public meeting protocol for local public bodies to conduct a public meeting without physical attendance by members of the public. Notice that during this extension of the state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton zoning port of adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom was transmitted to the Princeton Packet Town Topics and the time and was filed with the clerk of Princeton on the twenty-fourth day of April, twenty twenty. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and on the Princeton website and are be to be maintained throughout the year. And by transmitting a copy of saying to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof with the clerk of Princeton notices have also been placed on all window doors of the municipal complex. Claudia, can you call the role, please?
Ms. Chen?
Here.
Ms. Coulson? Mr. Davich?
Here.
Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Tenenbaum? Mr. Stein?
Here.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Here.
Okay. You're welcome. Okay. We'll start with resolutions. Our first resolution is case number Z twenty-two dash two fifty-six. Seventeen Carnahan Place, lot block seventy-one oh three, seventy-one oh three. Is that seventy-one oh three lot three in the R eight zone? A copy of this is in your packets. Has everybody reviewed it? Had a chance to review it? If so, are there any questions or comments, or would someone like to make a motion? This this application was denied in the hearing.
Yeah, I just had one comment. Do we need to have in there the period of time she has to dismantle the part?
Bernice, it's my understanding it's actually already taken down. Is that correct?
Oh, okay.
That's my understanding. I haven't visually verified it, but I have no reason to doubt or statements. I could check tomorrow.
Okay.
But thanks. Good point.
Thanks.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Claudia, call the role, please.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes. Okay, we have one application this evening. It's case Z twenty-two dash two twenty-three. Lincoln Court, ten, ten to fourteen and sixteen to eighteen, Van de Venner, block twenty-seven point oh four, lot seventeen, twenty-two, twenty-three, and seventy in the C B zone and in the R four zone of the borough. Claudia, or excuse me, Karen, are all the notices properly?
It is. The noticing is in order and the board has jurisdiction this evening.
Hey, thank you. Mr. Berger, can you summarize your memo for us?
Actually, I'm gonna let Dan Dobremilsky summarize his planning memo and give an overview of the project, and I will address the shade tree memo and the Princeton Environmental Commission memo.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, why don't we do this, then? We will swear in. Why don't we swear in all our professionals with Dan Dobremilsky, Derek Bridger, Daniel Weisman, our land use engineer, Elizabeth Kim, and we have Victor Onasika, the traffic engineer. You also affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening. This is Dan Dobremilsky. I was gonna share my screen if that works. Let me do that.
Yes, sir.
It's not working. Can you see anything?
We see a Google header.
Right. Hold on. There we go.
Ah, good.
There we go. Is that better?
Yes.
That so this is a, actually, the Princeton, I don't know if you've noticed, the Princeton website is down this evening, so I couldn't get to the plans digitally. So this is an aerial photo, is a Google map image. So as you indicated, this property called Lincoln Court, the properties that are subject to this application combine to total about seven thousand two hundred thirteen square feet or point one six five acres in area. Although all four properties have Van de Venner Avenue addresses, two of them lot seventeen seventy are more visually associated in front upon Lincoln Court. So in this view that you're looking at, you have Spring Street at the top with my cursor's going, Van Ventnor on the right, Nassau Street at the bottom, and South Tulane on the left. Coming down through the middle sort of is Lincoln Court. This building here that my cursor is circling is the property that I believe is on lot seventeen seventy, which kind of fronts on Lincoln Court. And then this property here that my cursor circling would be the other property, which is the other lots, which would be twenty-two and twenty-three that front on the Van Ventnor. Um, so the, and their property also includes a narrow piece right here coming down. It's number ten. It comes down and connects back in. So the property kind of looks like a narrow piece here, a square piece here, and then this rectangular piece here. And what I was describing was the the narrow part was the walkway on what's called ten, the back property on Lincoln and the property on Ben Ventnor. So there are similar duplex-like residential structures on both lots, two total. So there's two buildings. Here, they're kind of duplex-like structures. The applicant is proposing to reorganize and combine the properties, demolishing the badly deteriorated, that's their words, dwelling at number ten, and fourteen and a half Van Ventnor, lot seventeen seventy, or the Lincoln Court lots, as I call them, and converting the mixed juices at number sixteen and eighteen, the Van Netner lot building, lots twenty-two and twenty-three to a duplex with one dwelling in each half. In place of the removed Lincoln Court structure, so they want to demolish this building, a new ten-unit, three-and-a-half-story, which is thirty-eight point seven foot in height, rental apartment building will be constructed. It is proposed that two of the units will be dedicated as affordable housing. The rear yard of number sixteen and eighteen over here will be redeveloped such as the existing haphazard, again, their word, sixteen-car parking area that occurs on this lot will be paved into a properly sized parking lot for nine vehicles serving the new apartment building. On on-street parking, four spaces will serve the duplex building. So they're going to rely on on-street parking for this building to that'll remain as is basically will be converted to houses. There's an existing walkway, as I indicated before, coming down here that which serves number ten and will be made into a public access walkway v easement. They have bicycle park, like they're proposing bicycle parking, seven interior and step next here to be included with the reconstruction. As was indicated in the preamble, the the property is located in the C B Central Business District for the Lincoln Court lots and R four for the Van de Ventnor lots. The application plan submission indicates that four variances are required for the proposed reconstruction of the Lincoln Court lots. One variance is required for the Van the Ventnor lots. The type of variances are not classified in the application, but it would appear that a D four use variance for floor area ratio and also C bulk variances are required. Specific classification and description of these variances is deferred to the zoning officer and board attorney. They're also seeking final major straight plan approval for this proposal. The Lincoln Court lots area is located in the C B zone, as I just indicated. The property fronts upon Lincoln Court to the north. Existing commercial uses occur to the south and west. The Triumph Brewing Building is directly abuts the western bounds. So this building here was the what we call the Triumph Brewing Building. That building directly abuts the western boundary line. A small asphalt parking area in an existing residential building, twelve Ventnor occurs directly east of lots. So this is not part of the property, but there's a parking lot here for this building. My twelve the Ventnor, there is a deed restriction for one affordable unit, if I recall correctly, at this building, which is not part of this application, but it's kind of surrounded by the application property. The Van de Ventnor lots of fronts upon the street to the east with residential structures on the lots to the north and south on each side are residential. The rear or west bounds of these lots fronts upon the stub end of Lincoln Court and some open space or parking associated with forty-five Spring Street right over here. There's a little bit of open space. Looks like this used to be a garage at one time, I think, and this property was redeveloped. This was the, if you remember, the Nelson Glass property. That was reconstructed as a mixed-use building with six residential uses and approximately two thousand square feet of restaurant space. The applicant's narrative indicates that at a concept hearing before the Historic Preservation Commission, this plan received significant support. The applicant should offer additional documentation or testimony with respect to the historic context of the properties. And this statement, the applicant should describe the conditions discovered to describe that the building is badly deteriorated, which is what they indicated in their application. Regarding the variance relief, there are the applicant in the application in the zoning appeal forms that are part of the application. The applicant is instructed and required to offer a written statement and professional testimony regarding the variances. More specifically, for D variance, they are to address the special reasons to justify the granting of the relief requested by the required statute. These this special reasons must show the to be unique or peculiar to the property for which the variances requested. They will also, for both C and D variances, they will also have to show the reasons why the strict application of zoning prohibition of the requested use or development would deprive the applicant of reasonable use of the land and provide evidence that the requested relief may be granted without detriment to the public good or impairment and and intent of the zone plan. It is noted that the municipal master plan in land use element, as well as the housing plan element and the zoning office ordinance, excuse me, offer goals and objectives and requirements that would appear to support the general premise of this proposal, which is construction of apartment-type housing in close proximity to the district. However, the narrative offered with the application on the forms or as an addendum only offers vague references to recent zoning amendments and other nearby buildings. The requested variance to construct the apartment building with an F A R of one point nine nine percent versus the one point five percent that is permitted is listed, but specific requirements noted above, as previously indicated, have not been fully addressed with the narrative that was submitted. Regarding the C variances, in addition to the two criteria that I mentioned when talking about the B variance, they're also obligated to indicate to how the strict application of the provisions of the ordinance will result in practical difficulties or unnecessary hardship inconsistent with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance. Again, the applicant has described the requested variances for thirteen versus fifteen required parking spaces, which is this in here, I was using the cursor to show, and impervious coverage exceedance that they're asking for. But the narrative, again, offers a vague observation that many buildings in the Central Business District have coverages of almost a hundred percent and that it appears that the municipality has encouraged more dense development in the C B D or in other zones near Nassau Street. The applicant only offers that provision that that the provision of two affordable housing units, which are required by code for any such residential development, and the provision of a public pathway from Lincoln Court to Van Ventnor will offset these variances. The applicant should offer testimony and possibly written statement that is more specific to the properties in question and the required analysis in the zone appeal form. Regarding the site plan, the applicant should enumerate the and describe the open space areas that will be created for these residential lots relative to the code standards. Well, and any improvements thereon. It's noted that the driveway connection, so from Lincoln Court to the new parking, the reconstructed parking area behind the Van Ventnor building, the driveway connection there will measure sixteen feet in width. This is rather narrow for two-way movement, but it's also noted that the small size of the lot, the parking lot, is not likely to see a lot of two-way interaction. So but the applicant is asked to describe those movements. The applicant should also describe the width grading and edges of the proposed walkways from Van Ventnor to these uses. Will these walks be wide enough for comfortable pedestrian movements? As a question, could ADA accessibility be achieved if they were required to meet for construction codes? And then also the question of whether the grading and drainage will be adequate for to offer safe access during inclement weather. In particular, in the area back here behind twelve and fourteen, the walkway coming back, it seems rather flat, and I'm not even sure that they've shown a good connection to the new building. So that's things that should be addressed if you get to discussion of the site plan. There's also noted that there's some discrepancies on the tree removal. That's that's indicated on the plans that would need to be corrected. There's also some minor discrepancies on the plant proposed planting plan with the plant list, and they're noted in the memo. It is also questioned is to what extent is stormwater management improvements required for these improvements? That should be addressed. Some additional questions the applicant should indicate, if any building mounting lights will be provided along the further southern facade to eliminate the walk that's being proposed back in that location. And finally, the location of utility meters, meter pits, H V A S B and similar elements should be described as part of any site plan description or testimony. The application does include some pictures of the various properties as well as site plans. So I'm gonna stop sharing my screen now. That's the extent of my introduction for this.
I'll address.
I'm sorry, Derek. I didn't mean to interrupt. Since we have a lot of review memos tonight, some of which have suggested conditions, I think it'd be helpful if, as we go through them, we just give them an exhibit number from the board's perspective. So Mr. Dobremilsky's memo, we can call it Z B one, and that's dated October twenty twenty-two. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, not at all. Thank you. I'm gonna go through the shade tree commissions report. They heard this case earlier this year. They note the plan meets the number of replacement trees required under ordinance. However, the Shade Tree Commission recommends a more species diversity. As proposed, the plan calls for Atlantic twenty-one R B by day, presumably to provide a year-round evergreen screen. Other options to consider include Leyland cypress, leather leaf, viburnum, and natives such as the American holly. Shade Tree Commission encourages species diversity to avoid monoculture and to reduce the risk of tree loss in the future due to pests or diseases. Industry tree diversity standard is ten, twenty, thirty, that is, no more than ten percent of any one species, no more than twenty percent of one genus, and no more than thirty percent of any one family. The application was also reviewed by the Shade Tree Commission. They issued a report on September twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
Derek, did you mean environmental?
Yeah, excuse me. Thank you. Princeton Environmental Commission. Thank you, Karen. Their executive comments note that while increasing density is a goal of sustainable urban planning and creating a walkable and bikeable community, the P P C recommends that the project not be approved as delineated specifically with regard to the impervious surface, the four-area ratio, social and environmental justice, they disbursement of the affordable units around the building and provide similar amenities. Both units of the affordable units are in the least desirable location, first four facing the solid brick beside of the neighboring building. Both units only have one bathroom. The two-bedroom low-income unit shows a bedroom without a window. And then they have a series of recommendations regarding Princeton's Climate Action Plan, Green Building and Environmental Sustainability. They would ask that the applicant target the Department of Energy Zero Energy Ready Home Requirements. New construction should be all electric, install high-efficiency heat pumps installed, heat pump dryers, perform life cycle assessments for the material selection to reduce embodied carbon construction, E V S E. Chargers should be installed for the duplexes and the apartments. All rooftops should be evaluated for the viability of solar energy and polar and panels installed or conduit provided for future panels. The affordable unit should be dispersed around the building and provide similar amenities. Regarding stormwater management and landscaping, they request that the increased use of perfidious pavers be considered on driving surfaces where possible, given vehicle weight and turning radii and design exterior lighting for the lowest bug rating and I D A dark sky compliance. In regard to an increase in impervious surface, the roof of the apartment should be green and incorporate green spaces and water mitigation into the mix as planner safety boxes, rain barrels, and other green catchment devices. They recommend trying to save tree number five hundred, which is a twenty-inch sweet gum at the property line, and investigate options to plant additional trees, even at a different location. Health and safety, they ask that the applicant consider the use of operable windows and ceiling fans for natural ventilation and have an indoor air quality plan, even if preliminary prepared for the zoning board presentation. And regarding waste, provide organic waste bins and ideally could service the tenants and given the potential of automated waste collection spacing considerations should be made. And they ask that the interior bike space be identified. As far as Dan and I are memo, we've got about eighteen conditions that are of approval. I'm not gonna go through all of them. As we go through the the applicant's reports, I feel that they will address these, and we can go over them at the end of the the meeting. So I don't have anything further to add. Do you have any questions?
Why don't we then designate Shade Tree Commission as the board Z B two, environmental permission, and will Z B three? And I know you're still gonna go over your memo further, Derek, but we'll we'll identify it now as Z B four.
Okay, Derek, when you do review the balance of your memo, can you go through all eighteen of your conditions that you and Dan have developed?
Sure. I'll just for the, just to get it on the record, I will go over the variances that.
You can do it later if you'd like. That's fine. I just wanna do all of them.
Okay, we'll do it.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, I was just Dan Dobremilsky's identified the F A R memo that's consistent with our analysis, and there are several other memos. Section seventeen eight three ten coverage, sixty percent max is permitted, seventy-five point nine is proposed. Parking spaces required is fourteen minimum. Nine are proposed. Cars variance relief of five spaces for the ten-unit building. Compact space requirement, fifteen percent is the max. They are proposing thirty-three percent. And then driveway side yard setback, the three-foot minimum is a requirement they're proposing too. And then finally, impervious coverage requirement is forty-nine and a half percent, and the proposed is eighty-eight percent. A lot of that's due to accommodating the parking lot for the the ten-unit residential building. And I'll hold off on the balance of the conditions for approval after the applicant has made their presentation and the boards had their discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Good. Okay. Mr. Tar, are you going to?
Whoa, 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 wait, wait. See if we still have traffic engineering?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Derek.
Okay. And we have Ms. Kim also.
And a C K. And then we have historic preservation. So I don't know which order you would like.
Which order you'd like. Why don't we start with historic preservation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So first of all, Van de Vender, Van Divender interchangeable. I'm used to calling it Van Divender, so I'm gonna mix it up and make it more complicated for those listening. So ten and fourteen and a half Van Divender lies in the Central Historic District, and those two properties, as Dan had said, falls centrally located to Lincoln Court. Sixteen and eighteen Van Divender Avenue are the ones that face onto Van Divender, and they are actually in the suggested residential central district, which you'd almost think was a reverse, but that's the way the former borough had designated both those properties. So the applicant proposes to demolish the dwellings currently at ten and fourteen and a half Van Divender. And the properties designated at sixteen and eighteen are the ones that are going to be changed from an existing mixed use back to a duplex, which is the way that it originally was, which was seen on the sandboard match. You could see that it was originally constructed and functioned as the duplex, and it changed over time. H B C did review this application as a concept review on January tenth, two thousand twenty-two, which they always appreciate, and I think that it really makes the process a lot easier. The applicant did incorporate many of the comments that H B C made at that meeting when they presented their application for their formal review on October seventeen, two thousand twenty-two. H B C unanimously supported to your board this application. They found that the properties at ten and fourteen and a half Van Divender are in poor condition and that they would support demolishing it. They also felt that the existing Victorian houses on sixteen eighteen Van Divender, which are on the suggested district, the applicant proposes to substantially improve and repair them to its former residential duplex, which will integrate very well into that neighborhood. In addition, there is a connection from this property through a slightly widened pedestrian alley from Van Divender Avenue to Lincoln Court, which is an improvement, which will be an improvement to the pedestrian circulation. And H B C was satisfied that the new apartment building will contain architectural elements of interest and appropriately introduce new construction. new construction, which is going to be compatible with the new development that was there from the the glass company and the other historic structures within that area. So if your board is inclined to approve this application, H P C would also prove the demolition that would facilitate the construction of the building. They had two suggestions that they wanted to present to your board, which the applicant had stated at their meeting that they were willing to do. One was that the open space on the site, which is relatively limited, they proposed perhaps putting some additional plantings and street furnishings if possible, and that the lighting spectrum would stay within the warm spectrum of twenty-seven hundred K. So if there's any questions for me from the board, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Board members, any questions for Ms. Kim?
Well, I think we can just identify now as Board Exhibit Z B five. That's, I think Elizabeth has, in her review, was referencing both. Ms. Capizoli's memo to the board, November seventh, two thousand twenty-two, as chairman, chairperson of H P C, and Elizabeth's own review memo, which is dated October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Does the board want to consider now the traffic engineering, or do you want to review that? I don't know if you want to review it after the applicant has presented, or if you'd like to go through it now.
I think it'd be a good idea if we heard it now.
Okay. All right. And Mr. N S C K, could you present that? You would?
Good evening. The traffic, we have six comments, really. From a vehicle or traffic standpoint, there is no issue with vehicles. However, we'll note some issues with parking and pedestrians' circulation. Just like Dan has stated in his own comments, we'll also note that the parking requirement is not met. Fifteen spaces are required. The applicant is has provided nine spaces for the multi-family dwelling, which is short of the requirement. He's asking for a variance and perhaps a waiver, and we're hoping that we can hear his comments and see if he supports the request for that variance. He also is proposing three compact spaces, which is, whereas one is required, so he's proposing more than the requirement. I think Dan also noted that, we picked that up. He's also asking for the variance on that. Bike space, parking spaces, fourteen is required. He proposed fourteen. On the, on the plan, he notes the space for the long-term parking within the multi-family building. But we don't see it on the plan, on the architectural plan. According to the ordinance, he is required to show us detail of the long-term parking. And several parking spaces are shown outside. And he denotes that four of them long-term and three are short-term. So for outside long-term parking, you require weather protection for those long-term parking, either coverage or shed or something. It's not shown on the plan. So it's something that we would like to know from him. There's a crosswalk that has been shown in the parking lot between the A D A parking space. There's a crosswalk that connects to the multi-family dwelling. And he indicates a cobram there. We would like to see a detail of that and detail of the any detectable warning space, and also the detail of the crosswalk, dimensions and all that that are not shown. The other two comments are regarding, it's a consideration that will will suggest for him to do, if it's possible. The former Nelson Glass Company, the improvements that were done there, there is a sidewalk that terminates just a little bit at the back of those buildings. So we're thinking that in future, there could be a need to connect those sidewalks as developments improve. So if he can cross连通, what? If the developer can just put the cobram and the not end, so that future developers can tie in as the project developer develops. I think that's the only, and then there is the back, the rear corner of the of the multi-family dwelling. He indicates there's an existing pedestrian walkway. He doesn't say if, if he's going to improve on it. And we would like to see if he can make it more accessible for A D A and all that. That's all the comment for half for you.
Thank you. Any questions?
We'll mark this as Z B six.
I have a question for Ms. Kim. I, did I understand you correctly to say that you do recommend tearing down both structures?
The, the structure in the back, which houses fourteen and fourteen and a half Van De Vender, the historic preservation commission did support demolition.
Thank you. Chairman?
Yes.
I just wanted to note, there was one final report by the Fire Emergency Service and Safety Services. And they did review the plan, and they've been in communication with the Barsky Construction Group, and they're bringing it to a lesser use group, and he did not have any concerns with the plan from a fire perspective at this time. So I just want to get that on the record. Thank you.
Okay, did, did, is that, is that report on the website?
It should be.
On the website down, so, yeah, okay, thank you.
Well, mark that one as Z B seven. Thank you.
Okay, do we, is that the extent of the reports?
Yes, sure.
I think so, yeah, subject to Mr. Bridger going through conditions, I guess, after the applicant has presented.
Okay, so I guess we're ready to begin?
So Chris Tar, for the applicant, we have three potential witnesses, and maybe we could swear everybody at once. We have Daniel, Daniel Barsky, Jim Kamalik, and Dan Ward.
Gentlemen, you all swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful. Thank you.
So we propose to do it this way. Daniel has a slide presentation, which both describes all of the buildings and the improvements that we're discussing, and responds to the numerous staff suggestions, and then makes way for Jim Kamalik, who is, as you well know, both a P E and a professional planner, and he will give a planning testimony. It's our expectation that Daniel will explain the various items, including architectural and engineering issues. As if you have questions about specific items, both the architect and the engineer are here, Mr. Ward and Mr. Kamalik. So with that, if we may, if we could mark the entire slide deck as a one, I've sent to Ms. Casey the each numbered page, as well as a description of each page. And I'm going to ask Daniel and others, when they're referring to a slide as best we can, to just make reference to the slide to which Daniel's referring as he moves on. With that, I'll turn it over to Daniel.
Good evening, everybody. Hope you guys can see my screen here.
Go to slideshow.
Yes. In a moment.
There we go.
Again, good evening, everybody. My name is Daniel Barsky. I'll be presenting the PowerPoint, which we're calling the Lincoln Court Project. I'll start by kind of showing the same map that you've already seen, but a little marked up. The, we own the four residential properties listed above, ten dash fourteen and a half Van De Vender and sixteen dash eighteen Van De Vender. Sixteen dash eighteen are actually the only ones that front on Van De Vender Avenue. Ten and fourteen and a half are set behind the houses that front on Van De Vender, and they actually front on a dead-end street known as Lincoln Court. And when we first went to H P C for concept, there was some confusion where this was even located because it's so tucked away in a kind of a little bit of a weird corner. Even people who've lived in town for a long time don't quite know where this is at. So just through a series of arrows, if you're coming down Nassau Street, down St. Lane, and you pass Princeton Record Exchange to your left-hand side, there's this little dead-end street called Lincoln Court. If you make a right down Lincoln Court, you would pass the rear of Triumph on your right, the rear of the new Nelson Glass Building on your left. And at the very end, there is a dead end, which dead ends into the existing parking lot of sixteen dash eighteen Van De Vender. And that's where ten dash fourteen and a half are located at the end of that dead end there. And the first series of pictures, this is looking down Lincoln Court. You can see Triumph to your right. Ten and fourteen and a half is the building in gray a little bit further. This is just as you're walking again further down Lincoln Court, you're getting closer to ten dash fourteen and a half. And if you turn around from ten dash fourteen and a half right across Lincoln Court is the rear of the new Nelson Glass Building that was recently built. Again, just a closer view of the side and rear of ten dash fourteen and a half. And if you come all the way down Lincoln Court, where it dead ends, turn your back to the dead end, this is where you see the front view of ten dash fourteen and a half. Currently, nobody is residing there. The, this two family is in bad shape. And actually, during the course of talking with the fire inspector, there's a lot of issues here with this building. Number ten actually was used for storage for Triumph Brewery to store empty bottles and different supplies. So it hasn't been living for a long time. And backing up a little bit, you can see in the distance, there is a beige building that's the rear of sixteen dash eighteen of Van De Vender, the two-family that fronts on Van De Vender Avenue. A little bit closer here is the rear and the parking lot that was referred to during the professionals' testimonies. And coming down the side of sixteen Van De Vender is this walkway. Right now, it's overgrown. People do pass through here quite a bit. They kind of side shimmy through because it's obviously not established and not maintained. But I'll get to further my presentation, what we are prepared to do with the walkway. And so as you walk all the way down Lincoln Court through the park, existing parking lot of sixteen eighteen, you come out onto Van De Vender, Van De Vender Ave, and here is the front elevation of sixteen dash eighteen. Currently, there's three apartments and a psychiatrist's office that are occupying the building. And our application proposes to revert it back to its intended two-family use, so a single-family for each side. This is a site plan exhibit. I'm going to go into architectural and elevation drawings, and I'll actually come back to the slide to go in more detail. But just to give a point of reference, as I go through the architecturals, outlined in yellow here is the proposed ten-unit apartment building that would go on where ten and fourteen and a half Van De Vender are currently. And outline here in pink is the existing building envelope on sixteen dash eighteen, which is proposed to remain unchanged. And again, I'll come back to the slide to go in more detail as we go further. In the meantime, I just wanted to show you guys our elevation drawings for the proposed ten-unit apartment building. The front or north elevation runs parallel and closest to Lincoln Court. So this is actually where you would enter and exit the building. On the opposite side, running parallel to Nassau Street, closer to Nassau Street, is the rear or south elevation with another means of egress through this door in the back here. The east elevation runs perpendicular, excuse me, parallel to Van De Vender. And the west elevation runs parallel to the existing Triumph Building. And some more detail about the color and the material selection that we've chosen for the proposed ten-year apartment building. We're proposing a twelve-inch panel standing seam metal siding. Kind of outlined in gray here, we're proposing a prefinished cement board, which is going to be in a gray tone finish. Pella casement windows and pella sliding doors, white PVC railings. Over the front entrance, a twelve-inch panel standing seam metal roof in a charcoal color. And lastly, on the, on the lower level, where the first floor is, a face brick, it's called Glen Gary. It's a more red kind of brick, and that's to kind of tie in the neighboring properties, Triumph, Nelson Glass, and many of the other buildings in this area incorporate this type of brick. So just to tie the characteristics in together. This is a three-D rendering that my architect Dan Ward prepared. Just to give an idea of size and scaling and how the building will look in a more, in a three-D version, you can see Triumph, which runs right next to it. And on this following slide is just a view from the other way, looking down into the port. And you can see, you know, this matches the elevations that I just went over and described. There's also some exterior decks accessible from each side of the building. Quickly, just to go over the layouts, there's four apartments on the first floor. In the whole building, there's ten apartments. But on the first floor, there's four apartments. There's three two-bedroom apartments on the first floor, one of them to be designated for affordable housing. And there is one three-bedroom on the first floor. It's actually the only three-bedroom in the building, also to be designated for affordable housing. On the second floor, there's six. On the second floor, there's six identical kind of townhouse style apartments. You know, pretty standard kitchen, living room, dining area and a small study. And as they go up. And their individual staircase up to the next floor, there's two bedrooms and two bathrooms. Again, they're all the same. And finally, to reach the roof deck, they go up another half flight of stairs to reach the roof deck. Which were also the air conditioning units, the condensers will be accessible from, they'll be on the roof. So to quickly talk about scaling in reference to the neighboring buildings, you can see here. In the section from the site plan. On the bottom here, the Lincoln Fort proposed building next to the Triumph Building. It's actually, the Triumph Building is higher and more massive. It's a much bigger building, but the point to show is between Triumph and Nelson Glass across the street. It's it's not out of character with the neighboring buildings. And Dan Ward, my architect, proposed, excuse me, prepared sightlines. From both Van De Vender and Tulane. And because of where this proposed building is nestled in, it's not visible from any main street. So the only place you're really able to see this building is if you're looking down Lincoln Court, you may see a little sliver of. The back half of the building towards the current dead end. So it really doesn't have any. Impact on streetscape because of where it's nestled in. Also, part of our proposal is to preserve and repair sixteen dash eighteen Van De Vender. There are some repairs that need to be made. The previous owner really didn't take very good care of the building, and so we have. Items like in this picture, you know, this railing is all rotting out. The fascia corners on the building are rotting, need to be replaced. Looks like a bird is living in this one. So there's a lot of instances of just this repair that. Need to just be taken out and the same material put in. Here you can see the window casings are starting to rot out. The caps around the soffits are starting to bow and water is getting into the building. The lattice is falling down. And finally siding needs to be repaired. So. The. Excuse me, sorry, the the intent here is to preserve the building, just repair what's been deteriorated. After all these years of non upkeep essentially. And to try to bring back the charm to this building that it once had and preserving its historical character. So we did go in front of H P C, as Elizabeth noted, we did get unanimous approval. Just quickly to reiterate what Elizabeth talked about. It represents appropriate intensity of development for these properties in this area. The home on sixteen dash eighteen will be substantially improved and repaired and most importantly preserved. The walkway that I'll talk about shortly, that's going to be dedicated to the town. Will help with pedestrian circulation and walkability in Princeton. And. It's not destructive with the integrity and authenticity of other historic structures adjacent to Lincoln Court and. I think the kind of visual visualization of the sightline exhibit. And the massing of the building that I showed in previous slides indicates. And of course, the location indicates that that is the case. So. I'm going to come back to site plan. This site plan was submitted by my engineer and is on the drawings that were. Reviewed by the municipal professionals. There's a lot going on here and a lot of technical details, so. We did prepare. This exhibited. Which basically, you know, touches on the most important parts of the job. So so once again, in in yellow is a proposed ten unit apartment building. And in pink here in the front is the existing building on sixteen dash eighteen Van De Vender. So currently, this driveway along eighteen Van De Vender connects through this parking lot. And services the current building. What we're proposing is to cut that connection off, have formalized. Two conforming parking spots for eighteen. And then there's an existing curb cut with the driveway and formalize two. Conforming. Parking spots for sixteen Van De Vender. Also, the this walkway that I showed you guys a picture of earlier with the overgrown bushes about two feet wide. What we're proposing is to expand this walkway to four feet. To put pavers down and dedicate it. To the municipality to create a connection from Van De Vender to Lincoln Court, which then brings you obviously. Right into downtown. So if you were to walk down. This dedicated walkway, you can jump right onto Lincoln Court and go right into town. As you go a little bit further. In purple here outlined is a proposed open space of two hundred forty square feet. Dogumilsky, Dan Dogumilsky and also H P C both brought to our attention. It's something I hadn't even thought about. How, you know, maybe we should furnish this area. I think it's a great idea. Put a couple benches, like a picnic table for people to have lunch and enjoy lunch out here. And as you go further, there's an ADA accessible handicap ramp to get you to the first floor of the building. At the very end, tucked away here in an enclosure is trash and recycling. I'll show a more detailed picture of that as we get a little further along. And. Currently, Lincoln Court dead ends right here. At the end of ten and fourteen and a half, we're proposing to connect it into this parking lot of nine spaces. So that the nine spaces will service the ten unit apartment building. And I'll go into more detail about that as well. So I'd like to go into the variance portion of the presentation now, but before I do. It it's a little bit complicated because it's technically meeting compliance in R four and the C. The CB zone. So if you follow this red dash line. Down towards Nassau Street and then a ninety degree turn towards Van De Vender, here's the other red dash line. This is all R four and the rest of the site is the CB zone. So I'll do my best to. Walk everyone through what variance is required and particularly for what sites. And I will start with parking. So for parking. There's fifteen spaces that are required in total, and we're providing thirteen in total. So the four spaces between sixteen and eighteen and the nine for ten and fourteen and a half, the the new ten unit apartment building. Also, currently, there's sixteen spaces. So it's actually an overall reduction in traffic. And we're also requesting a variance for three compact spaces where only one is permitted. This is just a more expanded. Picture of the proposed parking lot. It shows here six spaces on one end and three on the other. So. Regarding parking, once again, fourteen spaces are required, nine are provided. For the ten and fourteen and a half, the new apartment building. We actually are going to be putting E V stations. As part of the application. And according to that newly released ordinance, you actually do get a credit of. One space that you're supplying. So technically, we will be supplying ten according to the ordinance. It's still a variance condition, but it's just something to note. And again, compact parking spaces. We're providing three, one is permitted. You know, a normal compliance space is nine feet, a compact parking space is eight and a half. So we have a couple more, but we do. Think that they're going to be used. So. I mean, the important thing about parking is. From McManus, the municipal engineer review supports granting the variance. The municipal consultant said a number of proposed spaces exceed the expected parking demand. And that has been our experience with downtown properties that are so close to. Public transportation and really encourage bicycling and walkability. So we do believe that's accurate and we do think that there are enough actual spaces to service the building. Again, there is going to be an overall reduction in traffic because currently there are sixteen spaces between the two properties. And finally. Nelson Glass across the street did receive multiple variances associated with parking. I just think it's important to. Point out because a lot of the properties in this CB zone. Don't quite meet the parking requirement and. In our opinion, I think, and from the municipal consultant's opinion, we actually exceed the practical number of parking spaces that are required. There is one last variance that has to do with parking. It's for a driveway side yard setback. So you can see here outlined in blue is the existing driveway. In yellow is the existing building on eighteen Van De Vender. Currently, the driveway is two feet off the property line. And it goes all the way through the parking lot, like I showed you in a previous slide, we're gonna. Cut it off from that existing parking lot and there's going to be two spaces there, compliant parking spaces. But it is an existing condition that we're not going to exacerbate, meaning there's two feet there now and it's going to stay that way. So. And I don't think I need to go over this again, but the traffic engineering review from the municipality. Proposed parking space exceeds the expected parking amount by six spaces and neighborhood characteristics contribute to reduce vehicle traffic. Recommend or consider granting the variance. And same thing with compact parking spaces. That we recommend the board consider granting variances on the proposed number of compact parking spaces. So now I just want to talk about variances for coverage and impervious. Specifically for coverage, we're requesting a variance for coverage on. Ten dash fourteen and a half where the proposed new ten year apartment building. Would be, so the coverage permitted is sixty percent. We're proposing seventy five point nine percent. So. You know, one thing that stuck out as we were kind of coming up with the plan for this is that many of the buildings in the CB zone. Exceed the permitted lock coverage. Triumph right next door is a hundred percent lock coverage. Nelson Glass across the street a couple of years ago got a variance for exceeding lock coverage. Thirty five Spring Street is well over the permitted coverage. So it's not characteristic in this zone to be over the coverage. And then specifically for impervious, there. There is no requirement in the CB zone. But there is a requirement in the R four zone and specifically sixteen Van De Vender. Exceeds that amount. So forty nine and a half percent is permitted and eighty eight percent is proposed. I think it's important to point out that the actual existing impervious coverage on sixteen Van De Vender is seventy six point six percent. So it's not that much of an increase from what's currently there. And if you think about this site combining everything together. If you combine ten, fourteen and a half, sixteen and eighteen, there's a net total increase of twelve hundred square feet in impervious coverage. And more than half of that twelve hundred square feet is for this dedicated walkway and open space. So even if you just work the walkway out of the twelve hundred square feet, the walkway is about four hundred. So it leaves a remainder of a net increase of eight hundred square feet. It really is in in the scheme of a job of sizing inconsequential amount. And more importantly, we're. Actually going to be improving the stormwater by conveying water where there is no conveyance currently. So currently, all the water just. Goes down to Spring Street. We're going to be picking up the water and taking it to the stormwater system. And from the municipal engineer's report, he states site drainage will be generally improved as roof leaders. And area drains will be directly tied into the municipal stormwater system where no such drainage features previously existed. So there is going to be improvement in conveyance of water. In addition to that, and I'll get to that on the staff comments, they did ask for some stormwater actual management and. We're prepared to do that as well. So there's going to be conveyance of water, management of water and a a general improvement in stormwater. And and lastly, I'd like to say about impervious coverage, when we were during the course of designing the project. The municipal professionals suggested. That we make the parking as conformant as possible, the drive aisles, the setbacks for the parking. The actual stalls themselves. And a consequence was of that was having this impervious. A little bit over the total of what's required. But again, I think with the mitigation. Efforts that we're taking, it's an improvement and it seems the municipal professionals agree on that. And lastly, I'll talk about variance for F A R. Sixteen and eighteen Van De Vender, there is no variance associated because they're existing buildings. We're not changing anything with the footprint of the buildings. And for the new proposed apartment building. One and a half is permitted for F A R and we're proposing one point nine nine. The municipal zoning officer cited this ordinance, and I think it's an important one for special. One of the special reasonings is. A developer subject subject to mandatory affordable housing set aside ordinance may request. And the approving authority at its discretion may grant additional incentives for the production of affordable housing, including but not limited to. Increase density, increase in the maximum permitted number of dwelling units within a building. And or a reduction in the off street parking spaces otherwise required. I cited the ordinance here highlighted in yellow. Besides this special reasoning. It really is in the same same size and scale, which is similar to the neighborhood characteristics. Triumph right next door, for example, is at two point four F A R. Thirty five Spring Street, which is, if you go down Lincoln Court, right, as you cross Tulane is thirty five Spring Street. So it's three or four buildings down. That's at five point nine four F A R. It's not uncommon for buildings in the CB zone to exceed the F A R requirement. Again, it's not visible from any of the main streets, so it's not impactful in terms of streetscape. It satisfies the parking needs for this particular building and is suitable for the use. And I think it's important also to note that twelve dash fourteen Van De Vender, which is right next door to sixteen dash eighteen. Was granted two D variances, one for F A R and one for permitment. Excuse me, one for permitted maximum number of units. So there is some precedent and I think. It makes some sense to grant F A R variance here, considering the surrounding buildings in the neighborhood. And that, you know, the parameters can can service the use of the building. I've been referring to the Nelson Glass Resolution, so the Nelson Glass Building, so quickly we're going to go over the resolution. They got a variance for coverage, a variance for the building side yard, a variance for the amount of parking stalls. A variance for how close the parking stalls were to the rear property line. A variance for the depth of the parking stalls and a variance because they had an application with stack parking.
Mr. Barsky, quick question for you. This was from the planning board, correct?
Yes, correct.
And do you know the date of that resolution?
I I don't, but I can send it to you. It's in two thousand eighteen.
Two thousand eighteen, thank you.
Yeah. Twelve dash fourteen Van De Vender, which I referenced earlier. Got variances for two D variances, as I said, one for F A R and one for the maximum permitted number of units. And this building is right next door to sixteen dash eighteen. And actually, in this picture, you can see. The little corner here of ten dash fourteen and a half, so it's right in the rear. And they also did get a couple C variances in regards to parking. Um, and uh they also did get um a couple C variances in regards to parking. Um, the length of the parking spaces and how close they were to the property line. Um, so I'm glad Derek didn't go over his staff comment because I'm going to address them now with an answer and um I'm happy to answer more questions after that as well. So applicant shall supply affordable housing agreement for attorney review. Yes, of course. Uh applicant shall work with the municipality's land survey surveyor to reconcile the boundary overlaps between lots. Uh, lot seventeen and seventy should be consolidated and the resolution be filed with the Russell County Clerk's office. Okay. Uh applicant shall post a performance guarantee inspection fees. Okay. Uh approvals required from other jurisdictions as noted in the memo as required. Okay. Uh, the property at sixteen Van De Vender is uh noted to be converted from a multi-use to single family. The application provide plans. Um, so um I'll show you on this next slide, uh just uh hand drawn what we're proposing to do. But from the exterior footprint, there are no changes that are being um uh n- no changes to the exterior of the building uh with the footprint, e- except for fixing some of the damage of fascia inside and I showed you in earlier slides. And uh you guys have probably seen a hundred of these that, you know, for this one half of a two-family. Uh, there's a kitchen diner and a family room, half bath on the first floor and three bedrooms and and two bathrooms on the second floor. So uh this is what we're proposing to convert from the current psychiatrist's office plus multiple apartments to its intended uh single family use. And we're going to do this for each side, obviously, for sixteen and eighteen. Uh, continuing with staff comments, uh the photometric site plan should be revised to ensure light trespass meets the requirement. Yes, okay, we'll work with the municipal engineers to revise that. Revise that feature. Uh applicant shall submit revised plans and put stormwater management measures um in accordance with Princeton's stormwater ordinance. Uh, so as we were going through compliance, uh we weren't certain, do we need to? Do we not need to? Um, the municipal engineers uh did say that, yes, they like us to uh retain this small amount of water. And I'll show you on the following slide how we're going to do that. But the bottom line is, yes, we'll we we will satisfy that condition. We'll revise the stormwater plan as part of compliance so that the municipal engineers uh are happy with how that's designed. Uh, existing easement uh for lot seventeen and seventy for the driveway shall be extinguished. Yes, okay. Uh, details of the proposed pedestrian easement shall be provided for attorney review. Um, that's that four-foot walkway that we're going to pave. Uh, and yes, we'll provide the easements uh for attorney review. Um, the applicant should clarify the material to be used for each pedestrian walkway. Um, so we'll be using a brick style paver for the pedestrian walkway, uh which is to be dedicated to the town. And coming back to the stormwater for a moment, um we're confident that it's such a small amount of uh net increase of stormwater that we're able to, under these four stalls here, um hashed in green, that we'll be able to uh with pervious pavement or pervious pavers and some reservoir underneath, be able to manage the actual stormwater on site. Um, so we'll work with the professionals, obviously, formalize this and give them technical drawings and uh so that they're happy with the design. Uh, continuing, the details of uh the parking and access easements across lots twenty-two, twenty-three should be provided to the municipal attorney for review and should be filed by deed restriction with municipal clerk. Yes, okay. Uh applicant shall include electrical vehicle charging uh as required by the following code. So we'll amend the plan as part of compliance to exceed the minimum required requirement. We'll provide a two EV charging spots in the the rear parking lot with the nine parking stalls that services uh ten and fourteen and a half. And we'll also put one EV charger on both sides of sixteen and eighteen. So uh they'll be able to charge cars as well. So there'll be actually a total of four between uh all the buildings. Um applicant will provide weather protected long-term bicycle storage. So um, yes, okay, uh we can revise the plans to that extent. Um I'm gonna um I I missed this on the site plan exhibition. I'm just going to go back to this for one moment. So uh there's seven bicycle stalls here along this walkway and along eighteen Van De Vender. Um, and there's seven more long-term bicycle storage inside the building under the stairwell, which I'll show you the slide of. Uh, uh, I believe um what the staff comments are referring to is that these need to be weather protected. So um we're proposing an awning off of the building to uh protect um the bicycles from weather and obviously the ones inside are already protected as well. And uh this is just a a quick cut sheet. A- as you walk into the lobby, under the stairs, there's room for bicycle storage. Um, so we'll have uh seven inside, seven outside, with the seven outside being protected. And wrapping up staff comments, sewer connection fee shall be paid uh due to the extensive utility work. Um Lincoln Court should be resurfaced uh to the western limit of the proposed curb. Yes, okay. Uh, the plans provide for an area of sixty-five square feet for trash and recycling. The applicant shall address whether this is sufficient space to accommodate the recycling and waste storage for tenured building. I'm going to show you the following slide and talk a little further about the trash and recycling. Uh applicant shall comply with municipal and state noise requirements. Yes, of course. Okay. And applicant shall sorry, I'll leave you guys out of the way here for a second. Uh applicant shall comply with the requirements of the municipal traffic consultant report. And uh yes, of course, we'll we'll comply um uh with the comments from the traffic report. And um he- here's a more zoomed in uh slide of the trash and recycling proposal. So this is a a screened in area with gates to get in. There's a seven uh trash bins for recycling with this little aisle to be able to access it. And uh we're gonna hire a private hauler to take trash and recycling away. And um if uh pickup needs to be more than once a week, then we'll make arrangements for that. So uh just quickly in summary, um from our meetings with municipal professionals and third-party reviews uh with HPC. And I don't want to speak on all the neighbors' behalf, but from the three or four neighbors I've spoken to, uh it's been met with overall support of the application. Um, of course, the the main contributing uh factors here is two affordable units, of course, and this dedicated pedestrian walkway um to enhance Princeton's walkability. Um, there's no substantive visible impact on streetscape. Um, and that was illustrated through the the sightline exhibit and just naturally from where it's located. Uh, it's very similar to size and scope of other buildings in the area. Um, there is, once we're finished development, there'll be an overall improvement in water conveyance and management. And lastly, preserving sixteen and eighteen Van De Vender and kind of bring back its uh uh its charm, I think is uh a a bit plus to the application. Um, so my part of the presentation's done and um uh James Klamalak is um gonna testify further on the planning uh the planning perspective.
Mr. Barsky, quick question before you leave. Mister Bridger's recommended conditions, and you may have addressed it and I didn't hear you. Uh, he has a comment applicant should consider installing underground services for the existing building scheduled to remain at sixteen eighteen Van De Vender. Did you?
Yeah, so I I didn't, I didn't specifically, but um if um if PC and G is able to relocate them, because it depends how many drops are on the pole. If there's two drops already, you can't put another underground service to a pole. So I'll explore that further with PC and G and if that's an availability, I'll sort of look into it.
Okay. And then I had a question. I don't know if it should go to you or Mister Tar, but I I did get a numbered list of slides. But slides twenty-five through thirty-three, in turn reference, you go consecutively, slide twenty-five says exhibit one. Slide twenty-six says exhibit two. So I just wanted to clarify, what are they? I don't know what.
Those are the pictures. They're the pictures of the damage on six, yeah, photos of damage of sixteen dash eighteen. So we can call them uh photos of sixteen dash eighteen, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Yeah, okay.
So uh Mister Chairman, uh Mister Kamalik's been sworn, uh he's testified a number of times before you, uh most often as an engineer.
Yes, we'll we'll accept him as an expert witness. I do have a question, though. Excuse me for interrupting you, but uh board members, do you want, do you have any questions of Mister Barsky before we go on to Mister Kamalik? Okay, bye. Sorry, Mister Tar. Go ahead.
Jim, floor is yours. Jim, are you off?
Um, yeah, I'm here now.
There we go. Thanks.
Okay, good. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, Jim Kamala, Kentshire Resources, I um intimately involved with this project, the design and engineering of the site um and the various components that were retestified to, as well as I'm gonna pro- provide some planning testimony and perspective relative to the variances um that are being requested. And I'll do my best not to rehash a lot of what we heard tonight. Um, I think one important point is that um number sixteen and eighteen, again, they will be rehabilitated and restored. Um, and also number sixteen in specific was subject to a use variance application for which the commercial use was approved as well as um various apartments within the building that were not conforming with the ordinance. And this particular application will revert number sixteen Van De Vender back in conformance as a single family dwelling in accordance with the ordinance. We certainly see that as a benefit as well as removal and replacement of the dilapidated structure ten and fourteen point five with um the ten-unit building, which will have inclusionary to uh affordable dwelling units within it.
Uh Jim, but while you're talking about those two units, I heard Mister Dobremelski say in his comments that we were relying on street parking for sixteen and eighteen. Could you clear that up?
Uh, yeah, sixteen and eighteen will have their own parking stalls within each existing driveway on each side of the property that would be accessed from Van De Vender. And so the the traffic, um the number of trips to the site will be decreased as a result of this because only those two units would be serviced with those existing driveways and that's where parking would happen, not within the municipal right of way. In terms of the the parking area in the rear yard of sixteen and eighteen Van De Vender, um it's existing and a a major benefit here is sharpening up that existing parking, trying to make it um as Daniel mentioned in our uh coordination with staff, as conforming with the ordinance as possible um and as up to co- current standards uh as is available based upon the limited site area. Um, we are proposing again uh nine parking spaces. Um, and in reality, it's it's ten because we do get credit via at least one EV charging uh station. But as was mentioned, um the traffic engineer's review letter, based on the ITE standards, did indicate that there was sufficient parking, at least in their view uh for the proposal. So in term of, in terms of the variances in the zoning relief, uh we know that we have central business district zone um for the new building as well as the R four zoning district. Um, and the ten-unit multiple dwelling building uh contains existing permitted uses. So multiple dwellings are existing permitted uses within the zone. And this is not a use variance for for some use um that isn't yet permitted. Uh, again, the two single family units will be in compliance. So from a D four uh perspective, the use variance is required to permit the increase in FAR from one point five um which is permitted to one point nine nine, which is proposed. Um, the parking spaces, fourteen are required, nine plus one EV credit for providing ten are proposed. Um, in terms of lot coverage for lots seventeen and seventy, where sixty percent is permitted um and seventy-five point nine is proposed. Uh, that was spoken to as well with the the increase in the um the footprint on that on that subject property. And then in terms of the impervious coverage within the R zone, which are applicable, basically to single family residence lots um at forty-nine point five percent. That's a relatively new um ordinance standard. Um, more recent, certainly, you know, than when these uh structures were originally constructed in the parking lot at the rear. So we have this existing condition where seventy on lot twenty-two, for example, seventy point seven exists and it's being decreased uh to sixty-eight point two percent in the proposed condition. Again, it's still above the forty-nine point five, but there's a decrease there. And uh the other single family lot as part of the duplex, the impervious coverage for lot twenty-three, seventy-six point six exists and eighty-eight is proposed. And that's really driven by um bringing that parking lot at the rear up to current standards and um providing, you know, the necess- trying to maximize the amount of parking uh within reason within that area. Uh additionally, the number of parking, compact parking spaces where one is permitted based on fifteen percent of the total parking demand, we're proposing thirty-three. Um, and the reason for that is the overall peculiar nature of the lot and and the the practicality of maintaining the municipal um engineering department's desire for a twenty-four foot wide drive aisle. And then also negotiating the bump outs of the rear of the building at number sixteen. So the compact stalls really fit the best in that corner near the rear access to building sixteen. Um, and that's shown on the site plan. So a sixteen-foot um length of parking stall in that area will enable that to not infringe upon the building and still get, still give the twenty-four foot wide drive aisle.
Did you show that site plan? I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, why don't you bring that up?
The parking lot, they they expanded parking lot drawing.
There you go. So you can see down in the right-hand corner where the number six is. We have below that, we have three compact parking stalls. Um, and you can see on the right-hand side to the right of the six, the end of those stalls are are not contiguous with the three stalls uh up on the page that are eighteen feet long. And that's really negotiating the the rear facade of number sixteen. So we felt like that that just fit really well there and it still enabled us to have that twenty-four foot drive aisle and then eighteen-foot depth stalls on the left side, as well as a minimum five-foot setback to the property line further to the left along the property line. And that's just based on these constraints and and trying to uh make it as ordinance complying as we could. This is how we got to this point. So.
Yeah, just to be, just to be clear, Jim, right by the six there, you see what looks like stairs there to be removed.
Yeah, they're gonna be um just relocated uh ninety degrees facing down on the page next to the bike rack. And Daniel, if you can flip to the other site plan just to clarify that, the stringer of stairs will be relocated. Um, just turn ninety degrees to facilitate that tight area where we have these parking stalls here. And that'll fit nicely there within um, you know, the existing notch uh at the rear of the building by the back door. And it it does provide a little bit of overhang as well from the compact stall. So we we think that um certainly having the compact stalls is a benefit with more EV vehicles will have more compact vehicles likely in the future driving around town and using parking. So um certainly we don't see any substantial detriment to that.
Jim, while we're uh while we're at the parking lot, Mister Anowski uh suggested that you depress a curb. And just for the board's sake, could you to show us what he meant and whether it's okay? Mr. Anowski uh, suggested that you depress a curb, and just for the board's sake, could you show us what he meant and whether it's okay?
Sure, the answer is, it is okay. And it's located, I believe, um, to the left of the ADA striping or the ADA stall. But um, right on that, on that curb return there, right in that curved area so that if the sidewalk within the right of way is expanded in the future to the left, pedestrians can get down from that curb um, and make their way into the parking lot, so I don't think we see any issue with including that as part of that new curb there. In terms of the um, variance for FAR, we'd like to refer to the court decision Randolph Town Center versus uh, the township of Randolph. Um, indicating that the board should employ variance tests in the Coventry Square versus Westwood Zoning Board of Adjustment case. Uh, in particular, and not the heightened standard of the Medici criteria um, that is typically associated with B one variances. And just to say that another way, this is an approved use in the zone, um, the only relief that we're asking for is a slight increase in FAR, um, which does have some indications from the municipal ordinance that there's an availability and flexibility for the board to make a decision on that for affordable housing. And then here in this particular case, the Coventry Standard Criteria is specifically meant when the site remains suitable for the use. Uh, here the multiple dwellings despite the increase in floor area and that the increase will not have a substantial impact on adjacent properties and is still reconcilable within the governing body's intent uh, to regulate overall massive buildings to the one point five floor area, so as not to impact um, the neighborhood. So in terms of some of the testimony that was provided, um, for this application that's proposed, it's at least our view that it's, it's not inconsistent and it is generally in keeping with elevated FARs within this particular area of the CB district based upon larger um, footprints and multiple floor buildings on very small lots. And the testimony that was provided was the Triumph Building has a two point four calculated FAR from the tax assessor as well as thirty-five Spring Street, for example, of five point nine. Here, we're, we're still under two, we're going from one point five to one point nine nine. So um, at least in our view, this is not um, something that's just completely unique. Um, and it does sort of model what's grown up in the area, you know, over historic time. Um, in terms of supporting the variance from the positive criteria and satisfying purposes of zoning, we feel that uh, A is supported to promote the general welfare, in this case, providing affordable housing on site. Um, and also to redevelop the dilapidated structure ten, fourteen and a half as well as restoring sixteen, eighteen. Um, so that that can continue in a nice way into the future and enhance the Van Deventer frontage. Um, which is, you know, been deteriorated and somewhat to a detriment in and around um, twelve and fourteen and the yellow building there on the corner at Spring Street. So we, we feel that that will promote the general welfare from that perspective. Um, also in this case, purpose M to promote the more efficient use of land where, for example, on lot ten and fourteen point five, we're using that available area to locate the building. We have the ability of not creating a new parking lot on the related adjacent lot that the applicant owns. But just enhancing the existing parking lot to the rear of sixteen, eighteen to make it more in conformance uh, with the ordinance, so we feel that that, that purpose M is supported with the efficient um, use of land, we feel that granting the relief helps address the housing issues identified in the twenty seventeen reexamination report, including providing affordable housing, uh, opportunities for middle income housing for which a unit will be designated and maintaining a range of housing opportunities to ensure a diverse population of all age groups and economic levels as well as a low income unit which will be um, a three-bedroom unit, these particular apartments not only provide a more affordable option, they will also be uh, deed restricted, as I said, one low income unit. Um, which I believe will be the three-bedroom unit and a moderate income unit which will be the two-bedroom unit, and importantly, the three-bedroom unit is designated as low. Um, because it's critical uh, to the municipality's inventory of affordable units, they're really the hardest to come by for low income families with children. And recent, you know, uh, economic conditions relative to interest rates um, have, have made home buying for lower economic levels of folks, you know, a reality, at least in this point in time, so from that perspective, a low-income three-bedroom unit, we see that as a significant asset. Um, given the difficulties of, I think what now they're saying to secure a mortgage if you make less than a hundred thousand dollars is, is pretty challenging in this interest rate environment, so. Um, we feel that granting this relief, the FAR relief helps address continuing concern of the economic health and vitality of the downtown area, there'll be additional residents uh, from the building in the CB zone that are likely to be patrons to downtown shops and restaurants. And that does become somewhat more important and critical during the summer months, you know, when the university is uh, people are home for the summer and it's, it's less intensely operating. From a design perspective of the building, the increase in FAR amounts to an additional approximately thirty-five hundred square feet of floor space. And that, that floor space is associated with providing more usable space for the tenants um, in the upper six units, which include studies, exercise rooms, walk-in closets in the master bedrooms. Um, and it also provides allocated space for the ability for a home office for those that are working remotely uh, or desire to do so, um, including storage space for apartment living, which is important. Uh, all of these things provide more functional living arrangement, at least in our view, with those six particular units, and those are the elements that are tending to drive up um, the floor area here as opposed to increasing the number of units by putting smaller units on the upper floors. There's additional amenities here that are um, increasing the functionality of these market rate units. So we feel that at least this provides, supports the general welfare um, to the tenants and to the site in particular. Uh, given the nature of the surrounding development, CB increasing the floor area makes efficient use of the site. And it is consistent, as Ms. Kim said, um, from the HPO report, it is consistent with higher intensity uses uh, in the surrounding area. So in our view, we feel that the site remains suitable uh, despite the increase in floor area as we can accommodate it readily, uh, despite the parking barriers requested as noted by the board's traffic engineer that there's sufficient parking proposed, uh, which exceeds what's required from the traffic engineer. Uh, based on the ITE standards, we're accommodating areas for bicycle storage and, and we're also within a mixed use, you know, walkable area at this particular location uh, where, you know, walking and bicycling will, will be an added element decreasing the need for parking, et cetera. Um, and as mentioned, from a site plan perspective, from Daniel's testimony, we did provide um, a quite significant um, drainage conveyance element to tie those roof leader drains in uh, from the new building where currently there's a significant amount of impervious surface that just overland flows down the hill across adjacent residential properties. And down towards Spring Street, that'll all be picked up and tied into the municipal system. Um, and to address the relatively small increase in impervious coverage, as we talked about, we'll provide a, a BMP element, um, probably most likely associated with previous pavement for those four parking stalls in order to address the slight increase in impervious coverage for what that variance is, is requested. So from the negative criteria, I think I've addressed that from the FAR perspective already in my testimony. Um, we don't see any substantial detriment to um, the building from a massing standpoint or building height or visual impact to um, readily viewable streetscape, the building is tucked behind um, the surrounding buildings of which are large and in of themselves. We feel that the uses are generally consistent and compatible with the, the local area and the surroundings. And um, we don't see any substantial negative impact to granting this variance. In terms of the bulk variances, we had a few of those as well, just based on the existing um, configuration of the site in terms of uh, C two variances, identifying where the, the board has the ability to grant variances where the positive criteria are met and the benefits of granting the variance uh, outweigh uh, the detriments, we have a few variances here that meet that requirement. My notes here. In terms of the, the coverage and impervious variance for each of the lots respectively, Daniel did speak to that. Uh, again, it's a very small deviation, it supports purpose A to promote the general welfare. Uh, it's an efficient use of land, it's using the existing parking lot to the rear of sixteen, eighteen, it's decreasing impervious on one slightly, slightly increasing it on the other. Um, and you know, from those existing site constraints, we feel like we are providing the necessary amount of parking, actually slightly exceeding that. And we meet that purpose M, um. Granting the relief provides a better overall project for the community, keeping the building to four stories as opposed to what's permitted in the ordinance, which is actually five stories, and also providing for the most practical and common sense approach to parking uh, for these particular lots. It also accommodates the four-foot path which figures into the impervious calculation uh, from Van Deventer to Lincoln Court, where an easement will be granted for pedestrian access four feet wide, again, from Van Deventer to Lincoln Court. Um, just to the south of um, number sixteen. And as mentioned before, the, the, basically the net increase um, less the walkway is limited to eight hundred square feet in total and can easily be accommodated with a small BMP in the parking lot, which would be um, designed for approval as part of the compliance process, so we don't see any, any substantial detriment here. We have the increase in the conveyance to the municipal uh, storm system, which is an asset without this project, we wouldn't have that, those improvements. Um, so we feel that the negative criteria is satisfied that, that the coverage and the impervious um, coverage variances can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and this arrangement will actually, we feel, improve the areas. The number of contacts, uh, space variance, I think I spoke to this already from a technical standpoint of the reason why and how it works. I talked about overall the benefits of how that functions in a good way, but we feel that it, the positive criteria is satisfied by promoting the general welfare, A. Um, to provide that necessary parking, efficient use of land, given those constraints, working with the best way that we can within those constraints. Uh, purpose H, promoting a free flow of traffic uh, with the standard access aisles that I had talked about and trying to make it as in conformance as possible with the ordinance for that back parking lot. And again, it helps to increase the parking capacity on the site with the land available. Uh, so we feel that this meets the negative criteria, can be substantial detriment to the public good. Um, and it's, it's basically the intent, the standard is to limit the replacement of just replacing standard parking stalls in a high volume amount with compact stalls to maximize the number of parking, that's not what we're doing, we're trying to just make a the best common sense approach here. And again, it's not a public parking lot, it is a private lot, so um, we feel that it is, it's reasonable and suitable. Uh, lastly, the parking setback for lot twenty-two that Daniel discussed, uh, with that existing driveway up here on top of the page, the two parking stalls up at the top for eighteen Van Deventer, that's an existing driveway being converted to the two stalls and cut off from the parking lot in the back. Again, that's an existing condition, the ordinance requires for narrow lots, three feet. There's two feet existing, we're not changing that, um, there is existing vegetation along that property line. And we feel that those particular stalls, the vehicles can be, you know, at, accessed um, appropriately uh, based on that slightly one foot smaller um, side yard setback, so we think functionally um, that it's, it's satisfactory condition that the variance can be granted without a substantial impairment the intent or, or purpose of the zone plan or without any substantial negative impacts to the neighbor, because again, the driveway's there, we have some vegetative buffering and we still have uh, two of the three feet that are required. Uh, so overall, at least in our view, just to conclude on the variances, the FAR from the Coventry Standard and accommodating um, uh, the use notwithstanding the deviation, we conclude that the site still remains suitable for the proposed use notwithstanding the FAR deviation, in that it includes onsite affordable housing units, and in particular a moderate uh, two-bedroom unit and a low-income three-bedroom unit and the other bulk variants, as we feel that they can all be approved as a positive criteria and the purposes of zoning are met uh, and further without any substantial detriment to the public good, the surrounding properties or the zone plan. Um, and therefore, we feel that uh, in our view, that the negative criteria for these variances are also met. So from a planning standpoint, I think that, that hits the highlights, Chris, I don't know if I missed anything.
We'll, uh, we'll, uh, assume there might be questions of you if you have. So, Mr. Chairman, that's our presentation, and I, I, if there were questions, I think both Daniel and Jim are ready to take them.
Okay, um, board members, do you have any questions of any of the witnesses or the applicant?
Could we go to a regular screen now?
Sure, yeah, that'd be a good idea.
Yeah, I did have a couple kind of side questions, but relates to it. Um, could anyone uh, tell me the, the square footage of the affordable units?
Yeah, if you give me a moment.
Mr. Tar, do you want to qualify Mr. Ward briefly or?
Surely.
He's testifying now.
Dan, uh, you're licensed to practice architecture in the state of New Jersey, and you've been doing so for how many years? Yeah, you're on mute. Hard to hear you.
I have the information here, um.
Before you get started, you, 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 you're a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey.
Yes, I am, since nineteen eighty.
And you designed this building?
I did.
Have you testified before the board before?
I have, yes.
Right, I think we'd accept Mr. Ward as an expert in architecture.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and so either the expert or Mr. Barsky, one or the other's gonna tell you how many square feet there are in the units.
I, I have it here in front of me, the three-bedroom is nine hundred eighty-seven square feet. And the two-bedroom is eight hundred twenty-five square feet.
Is that, are that all, those are all of the two bedrooms?
No, those are the affordable units.
These are just the affordable units, okay, that's fine.
And maybe, this may be directed at Derek or Steve Cohen, you may be able to help out. Um, under the affordable housing requirements, um, does anybody know, I, I couldn't get online to check it earlier before the meeting, on the two-bedroom, does that make it? Or is it, I know for HMFA, it's eight fifty
Right.
For a two-bedroom, but I don't know if, if you had. Um, does anybody know?
No, I think, uh, I don't know if there's a, a state, if the building code addresses square footage.
We have talked to Maureen about that, and she says that unless you're borrowing money from the state, there, there is no area requirement of, eh, eh, state or otherwise.
I know, okay, I, I know there's not any sort of like bedroom requirement, I, I I, I thought, but I don't, I don't know, that there was a minimum total square footage for each bedroom. For each bedroom size. But. Um. The other, other question, um. I, I have and. Anyway, that'll get sort of resolved anyway when you sign your. Affordable housing agreement.
Right. Uh, we've got Mister Ward here. Let's ask Mister Ward this. I mean, the bedrooms are of, of, of compliant with the building code.
Yes, they are compliant with the building code. I think the.
That's, that's irrelevant for the town getting credit.
I, I think the, the bedroom area requirement you're referring to, if I'm not mistaken, is the former township. Where the.
I'm, I'm, I'm talking about. The state affordable housing. Requirement for a town to get credit. As a legitimate unit.
I just want to amplify what I said before. Maureen Fullaway is the, is the municipal affordable housing coordinator. We've spoken with her. She's sent us an email indicating that there is no area requirement statewide or municipal. Unless you're borrowing from the HMFA, which has its requirements. It won't lend money. Uh, for units which aren't of a size that they choose.
Okay, and a, a related question. Did you ask her about number of bathrooms? Um. I'm particularly concerned about the three bedroom. Uh, again, I know what HMFA had requires. They require. Fire one and a half, a minimum of one and a half baths. For a three bedroom. And. I, I thought it was consistent with what the state required. Meaning you have. But you might look in. Double confirm that, that's.
As you say, we're not going to get a building permit if we're wrong, so.
Yeah, or. So.
I think we'll, we'll double che- check with Maureen. Um.
She's gone, isn't she?
Yeah, they're booking, hiring a replacement.
We, we'll find the, the right information um, to make sure that we satisfy all those requirements as far. Um, from, from the conversations we had, uh, we, we do comply with the UHAC and um. It, it does meet all the requirements for sizing, sizing of bedrooms. Um, of course, adding another bathroom means taking away from somewhere else. I, um, so. Eh, 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 in honesty, we, we very thoughtfully designed these units to, to try. Because I've seen other affordable units design where there was like, you know, um. A ten foot by eight foot living room. It's really not. Realistic, so we did put a lot of thought into how we designed them, but we'll certainly follow up on the, on the additional bathroom. Uh. From the research we've done, it doesn't appear that we need one, but we'll certainly look into it.
Okay, thanks. Yeah.
Any, any other questions?
Yeah, and what about the um, addition, the, the uh, windowless bedroom? You're gonna address that as well?
Yeah, so uh, probably Dan can talk more o- on this behalf, but.
Yeah, it, it's, eh, we, we understand that's not an ideal circumstance, but. It is permitted for an R two use with, with two exits. So.
Well, what are the two exits?
There is, there needs to be two exits on that floor.
So what is?
There's one out. There's one out the front door and then there's a, a side door that takes you out to the front entrance.
Yeah, I, I think your. The, your plan, Dan, was old. It didn't show that door. On your slide, but yeah, we have a separate exit door from that particular unit. It satisfies that requirement. So there would be two.
Can we, sorry, can we get a look again at the uh? At the, the building that shows that, the, the floor plan, the bedroom that has no window? And also, I'm just curious about the, um. Just the kind of layout, how there's like an exercise room at the, at the top and then there's like. Patio outside there. I just kind of want to, I, I don't have the plans. They, they weren't sent to me, so I don't have a chance to look at the building that much. I'd be curious to see a little bit more about. About that.
You guys see my screen here, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, uh. I'm gonna zoom this in here.
There you go, you see?
Yeah, so there's, there's, um. There's a exit here to the corridor and then there's a second um, means of egress over here. So there's um, uh, two ways out. That's what Dan was referring to. Yeah, it goes right out. Yeah, right out to grade. It goes, I don't know what happened to my cursor. It goes out to a walkway that wraps around the building and takes you out, out of the building.
It's right at grade. It's, there's no drop there.
There, no, there is no drop. Yeah, um, and then.
Wait, let me ask one other question. Excuse me.
Sure.
Is, is that an ADA compliant unit?
It, it is. It is. So we designed the building so that there is an ADA ramp to actually access the first floor. The, you can see on the parameters, the bathrooms are handicap accessible and we'll design the units. Uh, for the other uh, handicap features like uh, doorways and uh, all the rest, so.
Excuse me, just keep in mind that the handicap code is changing March eighth. And the bathrooms are going to get bigger.
Okay. Yeah, we will.
So is bedroom three in this, in, on the upper unit here, the upper corner, that's the one that has no window?
Yeah, but it has that second means of egress.
Right, it doesn't get any light. There's no light in that, coming to that.
Yeah, so we're gonna actually build a transom into the wall to, uh, to bring light into there.
I was gonna say that might, that, that might be something you might want to think about. Um.
And that's what, from the hallway, from the common corridor?
Yeah, correct. So it'll pick up the windows to the common area. We'll then go through the transom. We actually used that application before.
So you're gonna have, so the two bedroom and the three bedroom have each have a bedroom with no windows.
No, just the one, just, um, just the one and the three, just the one and the three bedroom.
I'm looking at the two bedroom and. As well as the, one of the bedrooms in the three bedroom, both open onto the corridor. Where they, they're adjacent to the corridor. They're not on the exterior wall.
Right.
Right. In, in both of those affordable units, we do have one bedroom.
Oh, I see. Yeah, yeah. So the same, so the same application here with the transom from all these windows coming in from the living room area.
So the corridor, there's, there's gonna be light coming in from just a corridor. So it's only gonna be, you know, artificial light coming in through a transom. In the wall.
No, but I can get a transom on one of the inside walls.
Right, because here, the light coming in is gonna be coming from a hu- hallway.
No, from inside the unit. From inside the unit.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, well. No, the code allows, the code allows you to use artificial light. And mechanical ventilation to meet your light and air requirement. It's just, it's just not a very nice situation.
Right, yeah.
Especially in an affordable unit, quite frankly.
Okay.
Okay. What are, what is the size of the windows?
Uh, Dan, you probably have that detail.
Yeah, they're, they're actually very big. They're like five feet tall. I mean, if you look at that rendering, Daniel.
Look at that, the three D rendering, can I look at that again?
They, they're, they're very tall. By, I did five foot high with a, a little operable section on the bottom. We're talking about the windows on the lower level here, the brick section.
And those are hopper windows on the bottom?
Yes.
So they're right at grade.
Well, actually, this doesn't really, this three D rendering doesn't depict topography very well because it shows it all flat. There's actually. Uh, and a, a ramp to get up to this first floor and ADA ramp, so. The, you know, this was just an illustration of the building itself. It doesn't really take into account topography.
So this, that would mean that along. Along where the black car is, you're gonna have a wall in there.
It's just gonna. Yeah, let me just clarify. We were able to get, we were able to slope the ramp up, Steve. From the space in between the white Tesla and the black Mustang into that opening of the front door. There's no ramp across the front of this building.
So it's just perpendicular to the street.
It's perpendicular to the street.
Does it start at the curb line or at the building? At the building line, okay, thank you.
Is there a rendering showing the other direction? The other facade opposite? Like that, well, I guess there's, yeah, okay.
Well, this is just the same.
Yeah, same view. It's just the other direction. Um. So where are the, uh, so the, those windows up in the top, those three towers, if you will, so. Those are sliding doors out to a small, uh. Top floor terrace of some sort?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, and how is that? Um, I mean, I know this might be so much in our purview, but. Um, I'm just curious. I mean, there was comment, I don't know if it was in the HPC about, you know. You are over your, um, your coverage, so there, there was a mention about like a green roof or some other way of. Um, getting stormwater management. Um, obviously, the terrace sounds like it could be completely paved and no way to. Uh, you know, vegetation absorb water. Is that, is that the case there?
Well, we're gonna use a green. Infrastructure for the pervious pavement within the parking area to address that, so I think.
That gets kind of gummed up, but okay, um. Uh, alright, how big is the terrace up there? I mean, tho- those rooms are, that's a sloped roof in there, so is that, it says an exercise room. What's the?
It's not really, it's not, it's not really an exercise room because there are low ceilings. It's really just access to get to the roof deck, so that people. So that people in downtown can have some little outside area, which is. You know, um, uh, unusual, but it's desirable and, um, so, but yeah, it's not exercise room because if you can try to do yoga in there, you're gonna break your hands, so. It's really. Yeah, it's really just to get to the roof deck.
Okay, yeah, there was no, I don't have a cross section to show what the, what the roof line is, the interior ceiling. Slope is, so I can't see what that is. I was kind of, that's a. It's kind of an odd looking situation. I think it's great having some access to that. Um. Is there, um. Are any of those, the second floor, do they all have windows out? Is there any conditions where there's no windows coming to the second floor units or the second floor?
There, there are, you know, along the, the, the side along Triumph, it, it's a blank wall here. So, um. Uh, we, we're able to squeeze in windows on the facades, but being right up against Triumph is what limits the windows on this one side, so.
Would I ask a question? Daniel, I know we talked when we met earlier about. Seventeen A three eighty-three, the distance between. Windows of buildings. Um. And it did comply. Um. And obviously, I wish I'd have seen this earlier. Does it still comply? It seems like the building's gotten closer. To Triumph. You need to be ten feet with windows. That's a maximum setback.
There, there are no. Yeah, there, we designed, yes, it does comply. We designed it so, uh, there are no windows on this side here.
But they're on the first floor, right?
They are, but they're recessed in and they meet the requirement.
I'm looking at the plan and, and, uh. In the kitchens on the upper floor units, you have windows facing Triumph.
Yeah, we do. Um. We, we might have to, uh, put in some fire shutters on those windows. We'd have to review that. Uh, from, for code compliance. Um. Building code issue, but we might have to. Put in some fire shutters.
Now, the. Yeah, it's, it's also important to know that Triumph has no windows.
Yeah, no, I understand that. We discussed this and we thought we were okay and I'm just, I'm sorry, it just popped into my brain on. Bad timing, but, um, you might, maybe, uh, Jim Kamala can. Take a pen and see if, see what, what the requirement is based on. What's there, um. Where your architect, um.
Yeah.
What is that setback?
It's a maximum, it's. It, the maximum setback is ten feet. Under that section, it was different before it had a formula. It still has a formula. Um, but if the windows are less than ten percent. Um. It's considered a secondary wall and there's. The length of the facade is calculated and then the stories are added and then, um. That gives you a setback, uh, so.
Okay.
What's the fire separation, Steve?
Well, it's, you're not allowed to have any windows on a facade that's less than, that's three feet or under from the property line. And.
We, we, we don't have this in, in that application.
Well, you've got, what about your, what about your west or your east elevation? What's the setback from the property line on your east elevation?
Do you have that? I believe that's four feet, but I'm, I'm going by.
It's, it's three feet, but. It go, it abuts parking, right?
It's irrelevant. The parking isn't yours. It's to a property line. So if it's three feet, you can't have any windows in that facade. Has to be over three feet. And it's to the property line. It has nothing to do. There is obviously an issue. I think there's an issue with window to window. But, um, but the property line, the building code speaks to, uh. Windows, the, in proximity to the property line. And I think three to five feet, it's limited to fifteen percent of the area of the facade.
It is something like that.
And then up to five, then at five feet. You can, you can go higher, but at three feet or under.
So on this floor, uh, Steve, the two units to the right, the one all the way to right and the one in the middle have no such windows. So if they have to be limited in some way, they can, or altogether removed, it would just make them like the other two.
And, and Chris, don't forget, this balcony is cut in, so the windows along the balcony are recessed in another.
Yeah, the windows that are set back are subject to the setback.
Right.
Um, but the windows, I'm looking at the first floor plan. Of the, uh. Get back to her here.
Go to take us to the first floor value.
Well, it's, it's not only the first floor on the, on the eastern facade. It's. The windows in the living room. Are all that, that's a, they're. They're all on the property line. Let me see here. Well, it's something you have to think about because you can't have any windows on a wall that's less than three feet from the property line, three feet or under.
Right, so if you made it three feet and an inch, you're square. So, you know, we have to, to.
Yeah, we have to.
To be sorted out.
Yes, is your answer to that question.
Right.
Yeah, and then, and then you would be limited like, as Steve, Steve says, to the fifteen percent of the wall.
Right, right. Those are, those are on the, the, so what we'll call the backside of the building. You, you truly can't see that from anywhere, but we have to comply with the law.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Um. So I have another question about the parking. I guess it, it has been approved, you know, you have statements in there from the town parking engineer and whatnot. Just seems that, you know, the nine spaces for ten units. You know, anecdotally, it just seems a little. Limited, especially if you have anybody that, any, any resident that has two cars, then where, where you, where are you at? Um.
I don't know whether you're familiar with the, uh, affordable overlay, uh, zones that are, be, have been created all. Uh, one is right there on the two lane. Uh, the, you have to have a commercial use on the first floor and it requires no parking at all. And you can, the first five apartments you have upstairs have no parking at all. And so the forty forty-two just got an approval for a large addition to the existing apartment house. With, uh, the same concept that not every unit. Uh, uh, is, desires to have parking.
Chris, also, we can, um, you know, we have a building on two oh five Nassau Street. The, the units are almost identical, uh, to these two bedroom, two bathroom units. And, um, there's three apartments there. And, um, there's no parking and, um. The people renting in this area, a lot of them have no need for parking or one car at most. We have the same situation on, uh, Spruce Street. We have a twenty car parking lot, which is half empty all the time. In our experience, um, at most. There would be one, uh, car per tenant and, um. Uh, in a lot of instances, uh, no cars at all, actually. You, you also have the Spring Street Garage right around the corner. It's like a block and a half away. So, um, I, I think the type of people that are gonna want to live here, run here, are gonna rely on. Local prof- they're either, they're local, local professionals or they work from home and they're gonna rely on. Walkability or, or bicycling, public transportation. Um, obviously, there's gonna be some amount of cars, but we do think that we can service the amount.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I understand. I think that that's, you know, living in town there and you have the, the bike, the bike storage, I think is excellent. It's just. I, I hear what you're saying. It just, I, I know people like that, even, even not having a car, but people. It, it could be a challenge, but, um, this may not be my. Um, uh, you know, major objection, but it's, I wanted, I wanted to raise that, you know. It seems, it does seem a little light. Um. it seems, it does seem a little light. Um, one other question, if I may. Um, the proposed open space little area there, I didn't, you spoke about this, so is, is that, except there's a tree in there, is there? I mean, again, we've got a lot of impervious coverage where you're looking to do anything there to maybe um, that might, you know, say, you know, a tree well or something that you could use to I, I haven't like studied the plan to know if you can divert, divert water in there, but uh, what's that proposed little open space, the two hundred and forty square feet?
Jimmy. Yeah, I mean, I can, yeah, I can just say that, you know, we do have a a tree that's proposed there with a, a tree well, um, but we plan on including at least one bench and maybe a planter on each side so that people can congregate and instead of just a blank, you know, hard surface, there's uh, some outdoor area to, to sit. Um, so we'll, we can add that, you know, a little detail to that as part of if this was approved, you know, as a condition.
Yeah, I think you maybe make it an engineered tree well that actually is designed to actually, you know, like a
Sit on.
A deeper, a deeper tree well, whatever, that's more designed to, to capture and actually maybe you could divert water into it. That might be something that would be nice to, to try and accommodate.
Okay, we'll look at it.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Uh, this, the bike rack, the exterior bike rack, uh, on the side of eighteen, whatever it is. How are, how did you get to that?
Uh, down, down this walkway here.
So there'll be, that's an open bike, bike rack?
Yeah, it, it's open. We're gonna, we're gonna hang a ha, an awning over it to get it weather protected. So if you lived here, you would walk down this alleyway, pull your bike out and then come either out towards Van Devenor or back towards Lincoln Court with the bike.
Does that awning uh, uh, violate any zoning laws? Regulations?
Structure.
Not to my, not to my.
If it's attached to the building, it's it's, you know, covered porch structure, you know, it's like FAR, so.
You'll have to figure that one out. The other one, the other question I had is uh, this, this other bike room is called an interior bike rack, long term. Does that mean that it's more storage than it is in and out?
Yeah, I guess uh, the, the way the town delineates it is long term is like for tenants and the short term is like um, for uh, guests. Uh, Jim, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the other question, and I must have missed it somewhere along the line, but is this one property?
Hmm, hmm, it's currently four properties. It's ten Van Devenor, fourteen and a half Van Devenor, sixteen Van Devenor, eighteen Van Devenor.
Okay, and what, and, but what's the relationship between the Lincoln Court property and the parking lot?
That would be an easement. There would be an easement to use it. It would belong, it would remain with sixteen and eighteen as its backyard. It would be an easement to allow the people from ten and fourteen and a half to use it.
Okay, and what if, what if the Vander Vider people decided they wanted to build something back there? Could they do that?
Well, it's deed restricted. That's one of the requirements that the, your staff suggested that it be deed restricted as a parking lot.
Okay, thank you.
I had a couple of uh, I'm not sure if you'd call them housekeeping questions. I was indeed provided with a numbered list of slides, but is someone going to talk about slide sixty-four through seventy-seven? That's landscape lighting, site, whatever site plan.
Uh, I just, yeah, I, I just, in, in case a particular question came up in reference to those slides, I just wanted to have them accessible.
Sounds like we want to send you an amended list, Karen, and I'm sorry about that.
Okay, so we're gonna remove from this list sixty-five through seventy-seven.
Well, I'd like to ask a question in regards to sight lighting, so I think we're probably gonna look at those slides.
Oh, okay.
Okay. And my other question.
It's a pathway there.
Yes, my other question is um, we have memos with the conditions and I don't know if they're going to be addressed by the applicant. Um, Shade Tree Commission had some comments, Environmental Commission has comments. Uh, Mr. Dobromilsky had some questions or comments about the tree removal schedule. Uh, just see. Uh, certain discrepancies regarding plantings. Um, so I wasn't clear as to, is someone gonna speak to that?
Uh, certainly, as we finish up, we, we tried to deal with the ones that we had and uh, we could deal with the others one by one as we, as we come to them.
Okay.
Um, uh, while we're on this issue and because uh, Mr. Bridger said something about it. If we, we're gonna put an awning over those bicycles, which sounds like a good idea, that would increase the FAR on sixteen and eighteen where we did not have an FAR problem. I don't know whether we have FAR availability or whether.
But the alternative is, Chris, I can put a freestanding structure. It's not ideal.
Right.
And you wouldn't want to do that here. It makes a lot more sense to do an awning.
So I, I, I.
I mean, it's a, yeah.
I may have answered my own question. If there's adequate FAR available to sixteen and eighteen, we'll just put up an awning.
But you raise a good point, Chris. It would also be if it's a it's, there's a setback. If it's an accessory structure, it would be setback.
Right. So if it's, but if it's attached, it's, it just, it's okay. So that.
Well, if it's attached, it would still have a setback because that's a separate lot. It would have an eight foot setback, you know, so I mean, I think there's, it's.
It looks, it looks tight.
It's a good cause to to, to provide covered bike parking. I mean.
If, if the board were inclined to grant a variance, we have that language about such other and further relief, but why don't we come back to this?
Okay, any other board members? I have some questions.
I have questions.
Go ahead.
Um. The sixteen and eighteen, the two lots, I realize there are two lots. So your existing parking, your existing parking area that you are gonna turn into a parking area for the um, apartment complex, part of it will be on the lot that is sixteen Band of Banter and part of it will be on the property that's eighteen. So if someone buys one of those properties, they get a parking area for an off-site apartment complex in their backyard?
Yes.
Is that odd?
Well, it's, it's, it's downtown. I mean, that's, the, the point is it's, it's in an area that's quite urban. The, the, the intention is to hold them for rental properties, but if somebody were to live, you know, is coming to live there, they're gonna have, out the backside, they're gonna have a parking area. I mean, look at, look at twelve and twelve right next door. It's got a parking area out the back. It just happens to be for those cars, but what's the difference?
Well, because it, it serves twelve, whereas as the other parking, you're, you've, I guess you've got an easement for the parking area that then serves another off-site property.
Parking for sixteen, right. Sixteen and eighteen park right next door to their homes, as you see there on the either side.
Right, so there's no, you, you wouldn't propose to, to try to separate those with a, a new lot line or anything, or?
That, that wouldn't make much of a difference if you looked out the window.
Right, that you, you've got, I, I mean, if, if I were someone in the market for buying sixteen or eighteen and I had a parking area in my backyard, even if I didn't mind looking at it, there would still be some, you know, liability or responsibility being the property owner and it just seems kind of odd.
Again, the applicant proposes to hold all four properties and manage them as one.
Um, another question, can you tell me what is the square footage of the um, the market units that you propose in the apartment house?
Uh, if you give me a moment, I'll, I'll take a look at that. I'll come right back to you.
Thanks. And Mr. Atari, you were referring to a, I, I think some kind of a parking overlay. Um, does that affect the property? That's the issue of this or that?
No, no, no. It, it, the, the planning board and the governing body have designated air overlays, little spots. Uh, one of which is like all of South Tulane around the corner here. Uh, and, and they, they're called affordable housing overlays. And if you have an existing property, you can expand it. Uh, and uh, there are substantial parking uh, exceptions that are given. No parking for the, and uh.
So it, it, it's this, no, the premises in question here are not included in those. You're just.
By analogy.
They, you're saying, you're saying this is what's happening in the area.
Yes.
So there's something like that on Spring Street or?
Uh, on the Tur, Tulane, uh, just off Spring Street, across Spring Street from here, where you have, across Spring Street from the Nelson Glass front door is South Tulane and all of South Tulane has it forty forty-two and the uh, the um, old uh, High Tops building have both gotten approval for this overlay with the diminished parking requirements.
Okay. Is there a reason that your property wasn't included or it just wasn't specifically excluded?
I don't think they've included any CBD properties uh, in the, in the list.
Give me a few minutes and I'll.
Uh.
The overlays were designed to capture unmet need as part of our COA program. Um, as is the affordable housing overlay in this zone, so. Think that was.
The purpose was, yeah, get some more affordable units like we're doing. Daniel?
Uh, I have a question. I have a question, Derek. What is the parking requirement for a two and a three room unit?
Uh, a two unit requires three parking spaces.
How many?
Three. One and a half per unit.
A two bedroom?
This actually is, it's, our code's weird. Um, it speaks of a two family on one lot. I mean, if you look at this, it has a common common wall down the middle, but if it's a single family, each unit would need uh, one space in the R four zone, I believe.
And what about for the uh, the ten unit building?
Um. Let me double check.
I think I have it here, Derek.
Thank you, Dan.
Hmm. Yeah. Uh. So um, one and a half spaces per unit for a three bedroom and point seven five for a two bedroom.
Okay, um. All right, it looks to me, quite frankly, that, but we have the, the unit mix is, is what, is one three bedroom and nine two bedrooms?
Yeah, so when this chart was done, it actually, it actually over, it's, it requires more parking than we technically need. I, I didn't even bring it to the board's attention because it's, it still is a variance condition, so um, but yes, that's accurate. It's nine two bedrooms.
Okay, it's nine two bedrooms and one three bedroom, but it looks to me, quite frankly, that the two bedrooms are all three bedrooms. Cause you have, they're, they're three stories high and the upper floor units and they, and all the units have a bedroom, have a study in quotes on the first floor with a full bathroom. So basically, I look at, excuse me, I look at that as a, a bedroom. And then upstairs, you have two more bedrooms with two bathrooms. And you have a third floor exercise room which is could be a bedroom. It, it seems to me that the two bedroom units technically should be classified as three bedroom units because you're showing a full bathroom on that floor. And uh, you know, two, two bathrooms upstairs uh, and a room on that first floor that could be a bedroom. So I would, I would think that they should be, in my opinion, they should be classified as three bedroom. And, and uh, you know, parking should be assessed accordingly. I don't know, Derek, what you think about that?
It has a closet, it should be, it's, it's a bedroom.
Well, if you could have a closet, they don't have a closet, but they're big enough for a closet. And in this day and age, people use furniture closets too. So, yes, I understand, I, I know what you're saying. It just appears to me with the full bath on the first floor and a room that's big enough to have a closet, it's a bedroom.
Um, so, so for our parking requirement, we did, actually, if you look at the chart, six units at the three bedroom count. So the parking requirement, which pertains to the bedroom count, actually was calculated on three bedroom, though technically it's two bedroom.
So it would actually be, it would actually be eight, eight bedrooms. It would be, you had nine, wait, let me, I have it here. You have nine, right now you have nine twos and one three. One of the two bedrooms is the affordable unit with one bath. So that would be classified as a two bedroom unit. So you'd have, you'd have one two bedroom units and nine three bedroom units. By my evaluation of this. Yeah, because I would classify all those two bedroom units with a uh, you know, with a bedroom and a full bath on that first level as, as three bedroom units.
Right, um, the, 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 the two, there's three two bedroom units on the first floor.
Okay, I, I see that, but what I'm saying is they.
With no, with no study, I mean.
Oh, I'm looking, okay. All right, so we can take, we can take those out. But the upper floor units, oh, I see. Yeah, I was looking at the second floor. Um. Yeah, so I mean, I'm just looking at the upper floor, the upper floor two bedroom units are technically three bedroom units.
But if I understand, Derek, historically and tonight, if it has a closet built in, it's a bedroom. If it doesn't, it isn't. That, if, if that's the interpretation, I, that's why, why we did what we did.
I would just want to clarify, a habitable room is basically anything except a kitchen and a closet or a laundry room. So.
Right, but we, 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 we do our parking based on bedrooms.
Well, I mean, it's a, you know, I would leave that up to Mr. Bridger to classify it, but I would.
It's a habitable room. I mean, it's, they don't, it doesn't speak about bedrooms. A bedroom is a habitable room, just as an office would be without a closet or a den would be, so.
Did we determine what the um, square footage of the market units are?
Uh, yes, they're a little bit over thirteen hundred square, they're thirteen hundred square feet.
Thank you.
Big two bedroom. Um, Donna, any other questions?
No, not right now, thanks.
And I have a few. Um. Mr. Ward, what is the construction classification for this building?
Uh, it would be uh, uh, five B fully sprinkler.
Okay, so it's an all wood building, obviously. Um, I have a real issue in my mind with the setbacks. Um, notwithstanding what the fire department says. First of all, the walkway that goes along the, the southern border of the um, apartment building is a three foot walkway. And trying to access this building in the event of a fire situation is gonna be treacherous. I mean, you've got a three foot walkway coming from Van Deventer, however you pronounce it. And then you've got three feet along the side of the building. Your westernmost property line is three feet. And you have your, you have virtually, you have no access on the east, on the west property line because it's up against, it's up against Triumph Brewing. Um, so it, it seems to me that, that in my opinion, this building is, is way too big for this site. Um, you know, the, the impervious coverage, or the, you know, impervious coverage is thirty-two percent higher than the requirement. The FAR is twenty-six percent higher and all at the sacrifice for light and air. I mean, one of the criteria, the planning criteria is no detriment to the public good, but you're creating units that basically are right up against a property line and there, there's That basically are right up against a property line and there, there's. Virtually no open space there, none, there is none. I mean, you, you know, I'm small, my arms, I have a thirty two inch reach. And you, I could put my hand out one of the windows and I'd be at the property line just about. Um, so I'm very concerned about the, the physical size of the building. Um, you know, it's a new building, so it could be theoretically, you could meet the, you could meet the uh. Coverage requirements. Um, I think it's, and additionally, I'm concerned about, you know, the, the, the building type itself. I mean, it's, it's a very tight situation, it's, it's going to be, and again, it's a building code issue, but I think it's going to be tricky. To, for the fire department to access this building. So that was one question, to me, that's a major question. Um, and again, the issue with windows on a, on a uh. On a wall that's less than, that's three feet or under. Um, in the, one of the photographs that you showed, Mr. Barsky, looking down Lincoln Court. Triumph Brewing's, and this is not your problem, but Triumph Brewing's dumpster is right in the middle, it's right at the, it's in the roadway, it's in the cartway. And it looks like their, their trash area is, you know, grows into the, into Lincoln Court. Which doesn't afford you a, a really nice entryway, to say the least, but that's something that the town has to work out with Triumph, but it's just a observation. Um, this is a four story building and I have to look at the code, but. Mr. Ward, can you have a four story building with a single exit, with a single stair?
Um, it's technically a three story because those penthouse. Um, units are less than one third of the area of the floor immediately below.
Okay, so they are what, mezzanines?
They're penthouses.
Okay, so the pen, okay.
As far as the building code is concerned. And it has two exits, it has the corridor devised and you get an exit to the front and an exit to the rear.
The corridor devised and you get an exit to, oh, you mean on the first level?
Well, well, no, from the second level.
From the second level, you come, you come down the stair and you, you can go right or left.
Right, you got.
But you only have, but you only got one stair and then it branches into two stairs.
Can you put that slide back up, please?
The next, the next level up, Daniel. So the corridor ends, you, your, your um. Common, common path is down to the. End by Triumph and then you have your two options, you go either towards the back or towards the front.
So when you go towards the back, you're going towards the narrow space between Triumph and your building and then you're. Into an alleyway that's three feet wide that goes all the way out to.
Right.
That goes all the way out to, to Van Deventer. Um, and if you run around the building, then you've got an hour alleyway there too. Okay, I think it's, I think it's, I personally, I think it's, it's, it's a very awkward situation. I think it's way too tight. I think the, again, I think the building is way too big for the site. Um, I assume you're going to have egress windows because that's the code requires those.
Yes, we will.
And basically, they open on to a three foot space. Which, it's, it's difficult. You have an egress window theoretically with a ladder. And you're uh, opening into a three foot area. Uh, you said the building will be sprinkled, let's see. The ramp, Mr. Kamaltrick explained. And. Do the affordable units get any parking?
That hasn't been sorted out and in fact, we're going through that with forty forty two, uh, Tulane. There's eight spaces and who gets them, it's, it's not uh. Indicated by the municipality yet.
Okay, and one of my other questions is what the justification is from going. To a lot coverage from sixty to seventy five point nine, a thirty two percent increase. I don't really see, in my opinion, the justification for going that high. Um. I have a, a real concern um, on, from the planning criteria, the positive criteria. Um, for the general welfare, when you have. A building this tight and, and the effect of light in the air on a building that's so close to the property line. See what else. I think that's it, but my overall concern is just the size of the building. I think the building is too big. Um. I have one more note. Yeah, the floor area ratio is twenty six and a half percent higher than the. Um. Excuse me, yeah, twenty, excuse me, the floor area ratio is thirty two percent higher and the coverage is twenty six percent higher, which is significant. And I, and I don't see the justification for it. I think the building's too big. All right, those are my comments, so. That's it.
Richard, just for clarification, and I don't know if you know the answer. Uh, the Fire Marshal's memo says, I've been in communication with Barcy Construction and they are bringing it to a lesser use group. Do you know what that use group? What he, what, what he, what he's referencing when he says lesser use group, what the classification. Is going to be?
It's a construction use group, it's, and I'm not familiar with it, um.
I think that was the type five B that Mr. Ward.
Mr. Ward, you're saying that's the lesser use group?
Uh, right. Uh, five B is a construction classification.
It's a construction classification, not a use.
Are you, are you referred to sixteen and eighteen?
I'm referring to the Fire Marshal's memo, which he references both ten to fourteen Lincoln Court. And sixteen to eighteen Van Deventer.
Sixteen to eighteen probably is going to a lesser use group because it's becoming a duplex instead of an apartment. Mixed use with a uh, a commercial uh, use in there.
Okay, but. So we're, we're not entirely sure. If he was referencing both ten to four, ten dash fourteen Lincoln Court or just sixteen to eighteen?
Well, the, the ten unit apartment is, is replacing an existing building, so. I don't know that the existing use group is, is pertinent.
Could, could I uh, break into this uh, scintillating discussion and ask a question? Uh, the chair has expressed himself very clearly. Um, as the board members know, for a devariance of this sort, we need five affirmative votes. If it was the case that more than one other board member shared Mr. Cohen's view. Then we'd like to take that back and sleep on it and, and, and do some redesign, but. Good, Chairman, is that possible to, sort of cut through the pie here and see where we stand?
Well, typically, we don't do that. Um, we, we still have the public portion of the hearing. Through, and we've got comments from the, again, from the board members, but. I don't know, Mr. Bridger or Karen, I think this would be more appropriate for Karen.
Well, I, I, I think I understand why Mr. Tars making that request. I don't know, though, if hearing public comment might um, affect, uh.
Happy to hear that comment. I didn't mean to.
You know, board member thoughts on this, so um. It's not inappropriate, once you've heard public comment, to give Mr. Tarr a sense now before um. The board makes a formal vote, uh. I, I think that's fair enough to get a sense from the board and if what he's hearing is that more than one member, as he indicated. Has some significant concerns, then. Uh, if they want to reconsider certain things, that gives them the chance as opposed to getting a denial and then. Um, they would be in a more difficult position and it would be difficult to come back.
I'm very comfortable after we go through the public portion with, with uh. If the board members would like, it's up to them if they would like to comment on this.
Now, we, we had, we left open. Uh, I had asked Mr. Barsky about certain slides, he had said, well, he had them ready, but.
Well, actually, that's a good point, because.
He didn't know if they were needed, um, so I don't know if the board wants to see those slides. And get testimony about, I think it's, I'm trying to open it up now. Oh, landscaping, lighting.
Uh, we, we're still at the higher level here, please don't make us do that. It's, can we care for the public and then, and then come back?
No, actually, the only reason I'd like to ask a little bit about sight lighting is how are you going to handle the lighting on the walkway? On the southernmost walkway from the back of the, of the apartment building out to Van Deventer.
Tastefully.
We would be using wall mounted.
Wall mounted to where?
Off down lights, yeah.
No, where is, where is, on the walkway?
Oh, you mean, oh.
That long walkway that goes behind the movie theater, the building.
Uh, the, the, there's, there's two three foot wide strips of land that go out to the, to Van Deventer. The intention on that one behind the movie theater was to, to cut it off, it's not a public access walkway.
Well, it's actually, Chris, not to cut it off, it's just to leave it as is, like, clean up the.
But it wouldn't be lighted, there'd be no reason to light it. If you, if you wanted to light the public walkway, that makes some sense.
And the public walkway is the other one near the bike racks?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, well, just in terms of emergency access in that walkway.
Steve, also too. Let me just point out too, that, that the area at the rear of the building is open. So largely an existing parking area and lawn space. Um, beyond the limit of the property line, so there's sort of a second um, means of egress in the event of an emergency. If you don't have a building there, we have a parking lot and open space.
Where are you talking about the back of the building on Nassau Street?
The, the back of the building that is parallel with Nassau Street in that direction to the south.
But there's uh, there's a grade change there and there's a wall there, it's there.
There's a wall as you get um, closer to the sideline and closer to Van Deventer. But when you come out the, the egress of that door. Um, it is open to the adjacent property out the back where most likely in the event of an emergency or a fire, the fire department would be accessing the rear of the building via that. That open space at the back, so it's just something to keep in mind that we don't have a, an immediate obstruction, an immediate building, have this. Larger open space, plus we have the walkway that's five feet outside of the door. Um, and then there's a little choke point where it's three feet turning the corner and by the time you get to the end of the building, it's almost five feet again. So granted, it is a little tight there, um, but you know, there's. There's that consideration too, that the, there is open space.
But the, but the owner of the building on Nassau Street could choose to put up a fence. It, it, you can't rely on someone else's property for egress from your property, but, okay. Uh, but there will be, so there'll be no lighting on the southernmost walkway that goes out to. The uh, Van, Van Deventer and there'll be some, there will be lighting on the other walkway.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
When, when you take public comment, there is a question um, in the Q and A box regarding. And I know Daniel discussed it already, but they were requesting uh, where the trash and recycling would be stored, so maybe. Um, before we go into public comment, if you want to bring the screen up and show where that area is.
Uh, so uh, that area is um, uh, the screen area here that I'm pointing with my cursor. And I'll show you um, a larger view of it on this slide right here. So this is this corner of the building. Uh, and you have seven trash recycling cans and um, uh, excuse me, seven trash cans and four recycling with this uh. Uh, aisle to get through to access them.
Thanks, Daniel.
Okay. All right, are there any other questions from members of the board? Okay, if not, then um. We'll open this up to, what, Mr. Tard, do you want to say anything before we go to a public comment?
No, sir.
Okay, so let's open it up to the public. Claudia, do we have anyone who's indicated they would like to speak?
Claudia?
Yes, sir, Ashley, Ashley Corman. Oh, hi. Hi, I am um.
Ma'am, we can't see you. And we need to, yeah, we need to get your video on so we can uh.
Let's um, start video. Are we there?
Yes, all right, ma'am, can we have your address, please?
Yes, I'm, I'm number twenty Van Deventer, I'm probably the most impacted by this.
All righty, and we're just going to ask you, we're just going to swear you in, do you swear from any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Um, City Living, it's why we're here. Um, I'm at number twenty Van Deventer, which is a fence boards. Uh, length away from sixteen eighteen. Um, I've heard a lot tonight about the public good, um, there's a lot to admire about this project. Um, I am a private property owner, however, and I am, as Jim would say, um, down the hill, down toward the pond, so. When we're talking about impervious coverage of the parking lot, which will be for um, ten and a half, fourteen or ten and fourteen and a half. Um, I'm just concerned that it um, that it doesn't impact my property um, being uh, right next door, because um. We are right next door, but I mean, it's, you know, these, um, there, there's a lot that's not conforming about this neighborhood. The houses were built in the eighteen eighties, the street was paved in nineteen thirty eight, there were no curb cuts, there were no cars, there were no driveways. So um, you know, a little latitude, you know, would be nice and um, you know, a friendly neighbor would also be nice. That's it.
Thank you. Claudia, anybody else like to speak?
Yes, Tina. Um, hi, where am I?
We need to get your video going.
Okay, let me see if I can do that. Where do I turn the, where do I turn the video on?
You should see in the upper right hand corner, if you put your cursor in the box. You'll see a little blue box.
A little blue box.
Don't, don't come around here.
Sorry, um, Miss Clement, if you take your cursor and put it in the upper right hand corner. Where you see your name on the screen.
Where I see my, I don't see my name on the screen.
Ah, okay, because your video is not running.
Tina, I can see you.
Hi, Ashley, can I, can I just talk?
No, I'm afraid we can't let you testify.
Do I, do I, join as a panelist?
Yes.
You're muted, Tina. Now you're better, getting there, almost there.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can hear you, but we can't see you.
No, I don't know how to do that, the host asked you to start your video, okay.
Oh, here you are, okay, great.
Okay, thank you, and I, I swear.
And, and can we get your address, please?
Thirteen Van Deventer Avenue.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, so I have a question about trash for the um townhouse for sixteen and eighteen. Where will those trash receptacles be, especially for sixteens, since you have a bicycle rack? Right outside their kitchen, their back door and on the pathway, second of all, um. I didn't notice any greenway, green. So you have the park, the driveway for sixteen, and then you have Mr. Powell's driveway. And then you have the pavers, so that's one solid. Area of impervious ser- surface, and I don't see any greenery, I don't. I just see this blank. Mcadam looking at a parking. Spot in a parking area in the back, that's my vision. So trees are important, and then the question of lighting. If we have more lighting in this area, we are going to be able to read the New York Times to sitting on our porch. So what kind of lighting? And what would the lighting be attached to, there's no wall there. So that's, that's another question that I have. And I, I, I've had many conversations with, with Dan Barsky, and I love his, we communicate really well. I think he's really, really trying, and I appreciate that, trying to be a good neighbor. But they're just, you know, when I saw the front of sixteen and that pathway and all the Mcadam, it just, there's not enough green. And the light, um, and the trash. And I think that's probably. Probably my major concerns right now.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, one more thing, excuse me, it is a neighborhood. So we don't want it to look like a parking lot, okay, we don't want the, the frontage on Van Deventer to look like a parking lot. Mr. Powell was kind of nice when he was doing his, he put a huge tree that has grown up so beautifully. So it, it sort of shelters um Spring Street and Tulane Apartments and. And it's really quite lovely, it keeps it as a neighborhood, it keeps it as. Park-like, it's, it's really beautiful, and I didn't see any of that kind of greenery in uh, in Dan's. Presentation for that small piece, but that, it's a big piece.
Yeah. Um, so actually, the, the, the front, the frontage on sixteen eighteen and the whole purpose of the application was to preserve what's there, so. Whatever landscaping greenery you see now is what you're going to continue to see, the driveways are existing. Um, and um, the only addition is uh the walkway that is currently there, there's like um. You know, uh.
It's just gravel, oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's just gravel, and it was to actually um. Put pavers down on this four foot strip, so that's really the only additional hardscaping. Um, and uh, again, the, the purpose of that was to dedicate to the town, and so people can cut through that alleyway and be able to access town. Um, um, from a different point, um, but beyond that, whatever trees you see in the front of sixteen eighteen uh landscaping, uh, that's all going to remain. Um, and uh, the trash and recycling uh actually goes around the corner from the bike rack uh for um. Uh, eighteen Van Deventer, a- a- and same for sixteen, so.
So we won't see it, but right now, we just look at.
Right, the, the, and, and I, and I think part of the reason HPC supported the application is. A- as you drive down Van Deventer, um, there'll essentially be no change to sixteen eighteen, right? Um, and the, the new building in the back, um, n- not even visible, uh, so.
In that, yeah.
So, uh, that's what we're hoping is to kind of preserve what, what's been there for a long time.
Okay, I, well, it's good to know that the greenery will be, create an alleyway, I take it?
What's that?
The greenery that's there will, will create like an alleyway for the pavers, you have Mr. Powell's fence, the pavers, and then greenery.
Yeah, right, so, from exactly, like, like, like what you see there now, except for that little gravel walkway is now going to be, you know, a nice paver application to it.
Okay, so the driveway on number sixteen will have greenery, then the, then the pavers.
No, no, the paper, no, uh, no, the papers go right up to the driveway, a- a- and, and the reason for doing that is, and I'm open to the board to tell me, they would prefer a three foot walkway. Um, and that was originally our idea, so have a three foot walkway, a one foot buffer of green, and then the driveway, but um. Uh, what we landed on was a four foot walkway, and this was, I believe, recommended by many professionals, would actually make for a better walkable path. Um, so uh, that's the way we designed it.
Okay, well, as a, as a neighbor and as a resident, I would prefer a three foot path with a greenery. I just think it would look nicer on the, on the streetscape. So. But I thank you, Dan, for answering all the concerns, I really do, I know it's not easy, so thank you.
Yeah.
That's all.
Thank you. Claudia, is there anyone else in the public that would like to ask?
I, I, I don't think we got to the impervious. Um.
Yeah.
Thing of the, you know, because I'm, I am down the hill, and every time I do, I've been here over, I'm sorry, every time a new project goes up in town. Um, you know, the flooding in my garden and, and, you know, property changes, and I don't want to find out that um. I'm so in love with this project, which I really am, that I find myself underwater, so.
Yeah, so.
You could assuage those fears. I.
Yeah, let me, let me.
Lot to admire about what you're doing.
Th- thank you, I appreciate it, so, you know, the increase in impervious i- i- is really minor, and um, the, the actual. And Jim can talk about, speak better on this uh topic specifically, but right now, the water runs. Uh, existingly currently down to your house, and there is nothing to s- and there's nothing to stop or pick it up along the way. What we're proposing to do is um through a, a series of piping into the municipal system, is pick up that water before it conveys. Uh, downhill towards you and neighbors beyond you, to pick it up and reroute it underground in a pipe to the um stormwater system, municipal stormwater system. Um, you know, the roof leader drains are going to be tied indirectly, um, uh, surface drains to pick up. Um, water that's conveying um, uh, over the ground. Uh, and then we're also on top of that, going to do a management system of pervious pavers under these parking stalls, so. Um, I'm confident that the, whatever water situation you have will improve, not get worse. And the municipal professionals, in my experience, are very thorough when they do their review and compliance to make sure that that's the case.
Sounds good.
Hello?
Hello?
Yeah. Claudia, you out there?
No one, no more hands.
Okay, I got you, all right, um. All right, so I'll close the public portion of the hearing, um. How do we want to have, Karen, if, if um. Mr. Tar wants a, a, an informal polling of the board, should we have our, uh, should we have our. I, I'll call it executive session or our discussion first, or how should we do that?
Well, that's interesting question, because there are certain aspects of the application that you haven't heard testimony about yet. Landscaping, at least there are slides that you haven't presented to you yet, and Mr. Tar's asked that before uh. Where he put it, before the board gets into that much detail, he's looking for an overall sense as to whether there are other board members who agree with you, Steve. That um. Project's just too big for the site, so um. I'm, I'm, yes, the board can have a colloquy, but. And then that's probably the only way you can do it now, to see what comments do other board members have, they've heard Steve's concern. There's anyone else who agrees, this is the time to speak up. Um, if there isn't, then. I'm, I'm assuming that some board members would like to hear further testimony maybe about landscaping. The appearance, the. Light fixtures, et cetera, so um. And what time is, about ten thirty, so you still have time tonight before we get to eleven. Um, so I guess that's the best thing, Steve, to ask other board members, do they share your concerns?
Okay, well, yeah, um. Okay, I'll open it up to the board, does anybody want to make a comment or? Have a discussion on any aspect of this?
Um, I share the chair's concerns um about the size of the building and the layout of the building. Especially on the first floor and the oddity of having one unit with two. Entrances, one of them being directly to the outside. And the um parking lot situation with sixteen and eighteen, so, yeah, I, I do share your concerns.
Anyone else like to comment?
I, I do, I actually have some concerns um as well, I think that the uh. The, the setbacks and just how, how, I mean, I'm all for kind of maximizing, you know, the urban space there and, and, but it, it does seem as if the. Egresses in those tight alleyways between the buildings, um, if there were an emergency or even just. Just trying to make passage around the building seems to be very tight. Um, like you said, if, if a, a fire truck comes down that one laneway, uh, you're going to have some, you know, pretty tight. Passages trying to get in and out of that, uh, around that building.
Thank you, anyone else? Yes, Michael?
Yes, if, um. I am. Sympathetic to this application and the constraints it is dealing with. Um. I thank you for your comments, um. Chairman Cohen, and which made me pull out the, you know, the fire marshal's. Memo, which. Is extremely light in my, and I, I. I don't have the comfort, comfortability in, in reading this. That. He has spoken to any of the conditions regarding the proposed new building that you raised. If he had said that in this, uh, instead of. Really only referring to the lesser use group of the Van Deventer houses. Um, and not clearly saying, I have no problem with the new building. Um, or went into the pros and cons, I, I think. You know, I do believe. There are some concerns with the new building, um. I would more easily defer to the fire marshal if there was a. Substantial memo in front of me, and there isn't. And that's, that's really my, my problem. Um. With this, and I'd like, I'd like to see something more or have him at the meeting.
Yeah, I think, I think having him at the meeting would probably be a good idea.
You know, um. And, and. Yeah, so that's, that's where I am, I, as I say, I. I'm sympathetic to this application, and I'm, I'm not. I'm not one of the strong nos, but this. This is too important for me.
Yeah.
Uh, was, was that fire marshal's memo in our packet, because I, I can't seem to find it.
I.
I think it was posted.
I, or someone could read, you know, Karen, if you could read it to her, it's not.
Sure, um, no, I, I get the gist of it, I, I, and I, I agree with. Michael, there, there's a lot of things I support about this uh application. Um, but that. Uh, fire service access, you know, I, I can, I can see uh that. It is a challenge, and so i- in the absence of something addressing that in the memo, I, I would agree that it, it, it needs to be. Formally, uh. You know, we, we need formal comment on that.
Let, let me add one thing, are you done, Bernice?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I think this is a very creative application, I mean, I think it's, I think the building is well done. I, I think just the overall idea is a good one, I just think that there are. A number of areas in here that, that need further study and consideration. So, you know, again, um, you know, I, I like the concept, but I think, you know, there are certain aspects of it. You know, including the no windows and the affordable, and one of the bedrooms of the affordable units and the parking. And, and the setbacks particularly, that, that give me a great deal of concern. So, I just wanted to say, I'm not, I'm not uh. Going to say absolutely not, but I have some, some major concerns.
And I was going to kick the dog, Mr. Chairman, but now I won't, uh, thank you, that was very kind to say those nice things.
Yeah, no, I think it's, I think the building's well done, I, I like it, I like the concept, but I just think it's too big, okay?
We'll, we'll work on it.
Mr. Tar, does that mean that you'd like to carry the application?
Uh, given the hour and given the, the number of comments, uh, the number of which were, were very helpful, I think that might be a good idea.
Oddly enough, oddly enough, not really any objections from neighbors. Uh. Uh, uh, I do have a question, because if we're going to carry the meeting, I need some guidance how I'm going to come forward, if the issue is only fire access. Well, that, that would be a building requirement, I would be required to get a building permit, they would have to review the plans and make sure it's in compliance. So, is it a fire issue, or is it the building is too big? And, and the reason.
Penetration is in general, it just has to be added to that, the windows. The, 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 uh. Or, or are we code compliant or not, it's up to Derek if he's having second thoughts.
But I think we're talking about two different things again, Derek's talking about section three eighty-three, and I, I believe Chairman Cohen's talking about uh, a fire or safety. Um, a- and the reason I'm asking is if, uh, what I'm being told is the building is too big. There, there is an alternative to make everything compliant and lose the dedicated walkway and lose the affordable units, th- this was part of the trade-off of the application. So I'm happy to come back and revise the plan uh to try um and uh.
Well, let, let me ask the chairman, why don't we ask the chairman directly, he's cited a, a extensive number of building code concerns. As has uh Mr. Floyd, the fire code concerns. If we will come in with expert testimony that we comply with the building code, the fire code, the zoning code. Uh, and it's still a large building, uh, I, I guess we'll have to just then decide what to do.
May I have, may I ask a question, which is the issue of the size of the building? How much smaller would it be before you would say, let's address to the chairman, that you would accept it?
Well, you know, that, it's a good question, George, but, you know, in the past, when people have done new buildings. You know, we, we always question why they exceed coverage and FAR. You know, it's a new building, you can do anything you want to do, and, and I think you can justify some what have been increased. Because you are, there is a public benefit to putting in affordable units and things like that, but in this case. But in this case, it, it pushes it, I think, far beyond the limits. I mean, it's, it's, in my opinion, it's, it goes again, thirty-two percent on the, what is it I have here? Thirty-two percent on the FAR and twenty-six percent on the coverage, which is really high. And, and I question, again, the other question was the, I still feel that those two-bedroom units with three bathrooms and a bedroom on the first floor or three, you know, with a bedroom or a room that could be a bedroom, and it has a full bath is a bedroom. And so there are three-bedroom units, in my opinion. All goes to, you know, the size of the building. So I, I, I'm, I'm open to, I'm open to some compromise between what the requirement is and you know, exceeding it by some number. I can't tell you what, but I'm very concerned. It's just, when you look at that, it's just a, it's just very tight in there. You know, it's just, to me, it, it takes you know, way too much of the site. I am concerned also about the lighting on the walkways and the emergency access and, and again, the, the walkway to the south and to the north. So.
Can I jump in?
Yeah, just
Go ahead, George.
Just to follow up a little bit, which is, I, I realize that these other buildings are not before us, but they all have much higher floor area ratios. So, you know, I'm saying if those were okay, why isn't this okay?
Well, this is, this floor area ratio is not only a function of coverage, it's a function of of the, you know, the number of floors. I mean, you count all the space, what happened to our, what happened to our screen here? You count all the space in there and, and you have, you could do a, you can do a building with a, a lower floor area ratio and create more open space on the ground. I mean, he's, you know, the, the units, the units, it's a two-bedroom unit at thirteen hundred square feet is a mighty big two-bedroom unit. And, and effectively, you know, it's a, it's what? It's a three-story unit. I don't know. I think it can be done. I think I think it can be done in a little less FAR with a lower FAR and a lower coverage.
If I could just add my comments, I like what they want to do on the Vander Vetter. Is there a way to go ahead and approve that, or is this all tied up together?
Together. I think it has to be together, because the parking is, is on the one side and on the one area.
Okay, then, one other comment that I would make is that I agree with, with what you're saying, Steve, about the size. I, I sort of disagree with you. I mean, I, no, I do agree with you. But I'm concerned about the overall appearance of the interior space, and whether this would turn into a graduate student ghetto as opposed to someplace that families would want to live, given that there's so little window space. You know, living rooms had two slit windows. So I, I agree with everything you're saying. That's all. I guess that's all. But I think it needs to be smaller. I don't think it could I don't think you can go side to side and front to back like it's going. That's I'm open.
Yeah.
So if I'm understanding correctly, you guys would prefer for me to lose the affordable units, the dedicated walkway?
That is not, not what I said. I said specifically, I wouldn't want to sacrifice the affordable units.
But to be frank, the FAR on coverage is to offset the affordable units. So maybe it's getting late in the night and
How much your testimony? Testimony was that the extra FAR was giving storage and more functional space to the, the market units.
As Daniel said, let's leave it there. Let's leave it there, guys. Come on. Leave it there, Dan.
Derek, do you know when, when it can be carried? Because we need to announce a specific date, otherwise the applicant will need to renotice if we don't give them a date tonight.
Well, the next meeting is December fourteenth, and there's three hearing, three cases scheduled already. I don't know if we could schedule it for the first meeting in January, but we haven't adopted the meeting schedule yet, so.
Can we take it to the fourteenth and then re-announce it to, to further carry?
Yeah, I just don't want to, I, I, I can't bump the three cases.
No, no, no. Put us on last and just say it's going to be carried to the January such and such, because you'll know by then what the January dates are.
That's acceptable. Thank you. It's the board, the chairman and the call, excuse me.
I, I'm comfortable with that.
Well, as always, we thank you all for being so candid and helpful, right, Daniel? I mean, it's, we, we thought it was a good building, but we're going to
I think, just let me make one last comment. I'm not, I, as I said before, I like the concept and I like the building. I have some concerns. I feel they're manageable.
We understand, and I think I, I didn't mean to be silly about it. You, you were helpful and, and really it's, we've just got to give it a great deal of thought. It's, we were, we were pretty happy with it, as were others, but we'll bring it back.
And to answer Daniel's question for me, if you lost one of the, or if the town lost through this application, one of the affordables, and it ended up a smaller building, I'd consider that. I, and I, I don't like to do oh, each and every one of the affordable units and any project must be produced. You know, because it's a, it's a town-wide thing. Your, your project's not the answer to the affordable housing. It's problem in New Jersey, in, in Princeton. But one or two units, yes, does help out. But if it's one instead of, if it's one instead of two, for me personally, I, I'm fine with that.
But we'll have to talk about if that's another variance. I mean, the whole, the eighty percent, the twenty percent set aside, that would be another variance, and I don't know if
Oh, yeah. Oh, I said that knowing that it's a twenty percent, you would
Yeah, I know.
It would lower the number of market units, too.
And if, if it's a totally conforming application, there is no requirement for affordable housing. If there's no variances, am I mistaken?
That's correct.
That's the rule.
So I can do eight units conforming with no affordable and make the building smaller. The, the point was to give the town affordable units, dedicate the walkway. I was hoping it would be received better. It certainly was by the neighbors. I mean, the town has granted FAR variances in the past, maybe not the tribe, but right, right next door.
We're going to deal with the fire code stuff, Daniel. Let's, let's call it a night.
Very well.
Okay.
All right. Thanks. Good night.
Thanks, everybody.
All right. So I guess we're, we're done for the evening and
I have a question for Derek. If, I mean, anybody that wants to go, go. I thought they were, so the, the twenty percent requirement is not applicable. Still, they didn't change the zoning ordinance. Remember when, remember when Josh Zinder's property?
Yep.
The
They had changed the ordinance, and they had, they had a loophole. So they made a adjustment, and that was put into the new affordable housing section of the code, which does require twenty percent set aside. But you're correct, that his building didn't, because it was, it was only in the event of certain things, and they did, they were complying application, so. But they've, that was a loophole, and the town corrected it, so they're on the hook for twenty percent.
But but in this, in this application, the twenty percent doesn't automatically apply to anything five or more units?
No, it's only, it's at a density of, I think, six units per acre and then FAR variance. So that was all added after the, the application that Josh did. But that's an excellent question.
Okay. Not sure I really still understand it, but, yeah. I think another comment for those that want to stay, and it's, it's not really directly related to this application.
Well, we're on the record here, so if, if this is related to the application, then I think we should discuss it at another time. Sorry.
Okay. It has to do with Humbert Street and the court's recent ruling one.
All right. Well, that's probably something you could discuss off record since it doesn't involve zoning boards, so.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to close the meeting?
Yeah, if there's nothing else, I think we're adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a good Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.